I would like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. Pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication, school board member Diane Ralston will participate in the meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. A motion is in order for the approval of the meeting agenda. Vice Chair Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mrs. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
You have a second. You have eight seven yes, one not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
Moving on to motion enter closed session. A motion is in order. Vice Chair Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the President, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, that the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1. Two, to evaluate the cloak of the school board and approve annual goals for the office of the school board cloak for the 2022-2023 under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1. Two, to evaluate division council and approve annual performance goals for the office of division council for 2022-2023. Excuse me, 2022-2023. Four, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Five, to discuss with the division council staff and actual probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7 and 8. Six, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A8 and 8. To discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and action taken to respond to such matters where a discussion and open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jesse seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour.
Is it wrong?
The Prince William County School Board will now reconvene to open session. At this time, a motion is in order. Vice Chair Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of October 4, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the purpose of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session. Action items. A motion is in order for 9.01. Ms. Vice Chair Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Mrs. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, moving on to 9.02. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Chair Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve evaluation of the school board cloak and their 2022-2023 goals for the office of the cloak of the school board as presented in closed session.
Second.
I second.
Ms. Jesse seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
All right, moving on to 9.03. Approval and evaluation of 22-23 goals for division council. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the evaluation of division council for the, and the 2022-2023 goals for the office of division councils presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Our last item on is 9.04. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemptions from compulsory school attendance in case numbers RE22-5, RE22-6, and RE22-7.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we'll be standing for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Williams, will you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, we are at the beginning of our meeting, at the beginning of each meeting, we do our Thriving Futures Focus, and we are pleased to continue that again tonight. Tonight, we're going to recognize outstanding, so this focus recognizes outstanding schools, students, and employees. Tonight, we celebrate two, two National Blue Ribbon Schools from 2021 and 2022. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program honors public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing the achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the United States Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools demonstrating that all students can achieve at high levels. Ms. Lori Williams of the Woodbridge Magisterial District's representative will recognize the 2021 National Blue Ribbon School Award winner. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Because Porter Traditional School earned this honor before we began our launching Thriving Futures recognizing segment, we are certainly overdue in acknowledging this momentous honor. However, since two schools have now earned this honor in two years, we felt like this was the perfect time to invite both schools for recognition this evening. On September 21, 2021, the U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, recognized 325 schools as National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2021. Porter Traditional School was awarded one of seven, was one of seven Virginia schools who was awarded the Blue Ribbon nomination, excuse me, designation by the Virginia Department of Education. They are recipients of this prestigious award for exemplary high-performing schools. It is my privilege to acknowledge Caitlin Engelmeyer-Four, excuse me, Principal of the 2021 National Blue Ribbon Porter Traditional School. Would you say a few words, please?
Good evening, Chairman, School Board, Dr. McDade. My name is Caitlin Engelmeyer-Four. I'm the very proud principal at Porter Traditional School and have been serving the Porter community for 17 years. We are so excited and honored to be recognized as a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School, a recognition for our teachers, students, and families on their hard work and dedication to providing the best learning experience for all of our students. I have met with me tonight a small representation of our amazing staff, including our Assistant Principal Judy Mears, our lead mentors, Mr. Fletcher and Ms. Wenzel, Ms. Teresa Konig, our lead ESL teacher, and Ms. Laura Mears, our Director of School Counseling, as well as Ms. Aubrey Veracon, who is our band teacher. The Mary G. Porter staff dedication to learning and commitment to excellence every day proves just how important it is to become a lifelong learner. It truly takes a village, and each member of the Porter community strives every day to support the academic and social emotional growth of all of our students. We would not be where we are today without, with closing the achievement gap and achieving excellence without the support of the school board, Dr. McDade, and our direct support from Ms. Porter Lucas and Mr. Bigsby, and our previous principal, Ms. Whitehead, as well. We truly appreciate their support of the traditional model. I could not be more proud of our students, staff, and families to all their amazing achievements to come. I know that they will truly, we do not know how far they can go. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again to the Porter Traditional School teachers, staff, students, their families for earning this prestigious honor. We really are very grateful for all the hard work you do every single day. Thank you very much. Mrs. Lisa Zargarpur of the Coles Magisterial District's representative will recognize a 2022 National Blue Ribbon School Award winner for her district.
Good evening, Prince William County. On September 16, the U.S. Secretary of Education awarded 297 schools as National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2022. Coles Elementary, already a lifetime national green ribbon school in 2015, was recognized as one of seven Virginia Blue Ribbon Schools by the VDOE. I am honored to recognize 2022 National Blue Ribbon School recipient, Coles Elementary School. They are the recipients of this prestigious exemplary achievement gap closing schools, and it is my pleasure to acknowledge Catherine Forgus, the principal of the 2022 National Blue Ribbon, Coles Elementary School principal, to come and say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to say thank you to our tiny and mighty learning community, including our hardworking and dedicated team of educators, our students, families, community partners. I also want to thank the school board, our Coles District Representative, Ms. Zargarpur, and our district leadership team. I would like to introduce members of our leadership team, so Jessica Hale, Myra Holliday, Heather Mainwaring, Shannon Fletcher, Judy Armour, Julie Keeney, Jerica Graham, Kathy Miller, and Jessica Straight. We were honored to be nominated by the Virginia Department of Education for the National Blue Ribbon Award and are excited to share the work that we do to support the academic and life skills of all of our students. Our school culture is strong as we focus on developing global citizens by providing students with hands-on experiences designed to increase student awareness of how they can positively impact our environment and be real-world problem solvers. We hold high expectations of learning for all. Our teachers and staff know our students by name and need. We operate with a culture of collaboration and cultivate strong relationships, particularly utilizing our collaborative learning teams to work cooperatively to design lessons that focus on the instructional core and engage students in meaningful learning experiences. We build student agency through goal-setting and reflection, which helps students overcome obstacles and improve future outcomes while providing students with opportunities to increase critical thinking skills through leadership and enrichment opportunities. We are very proud and honored to have earned this national recognition from the U.S. Department of Education. Thank you.
Congratulations to the 2021 National Blue Ribbon School, Porter Traditional School, and the 2022 National Blue Ribbon School, Coles Elementary. We are truly enormously proud of all the work and your momentous accomplishments. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Latonya McDade to help conclude this portion of our school board meeting. After her remarks, we will take a picture with our amazing teachers and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Congratulations. We are so incredibly proud, and I just want to take a moment to personally not only congratulate you but acknowledge the incredible work that is happening at both Porter and at Coles. I also want to thank Principal Forgus and Principal Engelmeyer-Four for your leadership and for your dedicated staff. I want to thank the staff for your unwavering commitment and hard work to building bright futures for our young scholars. And I echo all of the sentiments of the board, the community, our nation in recognizing both of your learning institutions because you truly embody what it means to provide students with an environment to launch a thriving future for themselves and for their community. So, congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you for your hard work, for your leadership, your commitment, and most importantly, your service to all PWCS students and families.
Thank you. One more round of applause. Diane will invite, so we'll do Porter first, and then we'll do Coles. How about that?
(Inaudible)
On three. One, two, three. Hang on. On three. One, two, three. We'll do two more, sorry. One, two, and three.
One with the flash.
On three. One, two, and three. Here we go. Perfect. Okay.
Okay, thank you. That is one of our most popular parts of the meeting. Okay, let's move on now. We're moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson, motions in order.
Thank you, Chair Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Excellent. Moving on to citizen comment time. This, those citizens who've signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment periods for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour. The first half hour is reserved for comments on agenda items only, and the second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County schools. So, I will ask everyone to, who are going to be the first 10, to really stick, to only stick to the agenda items. Citizens sign up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified, or they will be asked to step down. We have 10 speakers on agenda items and 10 on non-agenda. Speakers have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you'll be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not do so, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We have a few seats up front, so I'll call the first five speakers up if they'd like to come and take some of the seats up front. Maggie Hansford, Katie Jefferson, Tanya James, Randy Provenzano, and then Jeremy McPike. Maggie Hansford.
Hello, my name is Maggie Hansford. My address is on file with the clerk. I would like to start by giving credit where credit is due. I want to thank every single educator in Prince William County that's here tonight. Over half, nearly half of our staff works, lives outside of Prince William, so coming to a 7:00 PM meeting after working all day and with all the responsibilities you have outside of work, it is extremely meaningful that they're all here today because it's of, because of them that this is happening with collective bargaining. So, I want to thank every single educator. I want you all, the board, to know that this is extremely personal for every single educator. The classroom right now, it's extremely difficult to get through all of the tasks that they have in the day with regards to other duties as assigned, with the before and after duties unpaid, and doing professional development unpaid as well. So, I need you all to know, this is extremely personal. This is about them being able to afford living. This is being able to afford their family. This is about not having a second job. This is about having children without having to take a loan out to have a child. This is about spending time with your child when you come home, meaningful time, and not doing work and putting your child to the side, knowing that they deserve better and you deserve better. So, I want to thank Dr. McDade for some positive conversations moving forward. I am elated to see that the resolution came out when it did, this fall, and I look forward to important conversations that need to be had because we have still some work to do with regards to the resolution. I want you all to know that I did see some, some simple things that can be changed, that were changed at the county level, and we know that we won't, we don't want to treat our school staff differently than our county staff. So, a couple items that I ask that the board consider is that we are the only division, the only county that has excluded staff from developing a resolution or ordinance. We are the only school division who required staff to collect cards to get where we are today, and the wording of the strike language was taken away at the county level, and that's expected here as well because that wording is in the law, as well as the election, ensuring that just because somebody doesn't vote, it's not a no vote. That doesn't happen in elections with politicians. It doesn't happen with employees here. So, I look forward to great conversations moving forward, and I thank you all.
Katie Jefferson.
I don't have a clock. Oh, there it is. Okay. So, good evening, Dr. McDade, Dr. Latif, and school board members. My name is Katie Jefferson. My address is on file. I am a proud member of the Prince William community. I believe it's critical for school employees to have a meaningful, meaningful collective bargaining rights and a real seat at the table. The school division's management has drafted a resolution. However, the current draft does not reasonably provide staff a seat at the table until fiscal year 2025. You know, why do we need to consider getting staff a meaningful seat at the table before then? Well, the majority of our staffing shortages do impact some of our most vulnerable students, our elementary school students and our special education students. So, I decided to talk to some teachers and see what their life is like right now. A veteran elementary school teacher with 36 years of experience said, "I am the only certified licensed teacher in my grade level, one of five. The expectations placed on certified teachers who are working with non-certified and non-licensed TOPA's is unfair. I have been offered no additional time or compensation to ensure the unlicensed, untrained, and brand-new educators on my grade level are providing the best education possible to our students. As TOPA's are untrained, their levels of understanding of the curriculum and classroom management put students at academic and safety risks. I have never felt my role as a certified and licensed educator was not valued professionally until now." A special education teacher of 25 years and a single parent of four indicated, "I teach a Level 2 class for students with autism. Administration has placed an unreasonable expectation that I must arrive 15 minutes before my contract and stay 15 minutes beyond my contract every day, all year. They set meetings which require me to come in early and/or stay late for four meetings per month, which lasts about one hour. In total, I work over 130 hours a year for free. I don't have planning. I don't have lunch because we don't have support staff. My school lost 36 staff members last year alone. Most of the staff left, and they did so because they felt bullied and harassed by the administration." Another special education teacher who left his school last year said, "I watched the administration create a hostile and volatile work environment full of cultural insensitivity. My administration told my teaching assistant, who is Muslim, that it was time he shaved his beard and cut his hair to clean up his image. The administrator also said cops are murderers. The administrator also said, 'Men rape people, so society treats them like rapists.'" You know, I did ask him, I said, "Why didn't you say something? What's going on?" And he said, honestly, he was scared to have that conversation because they've watched the same person retaliate against staff, and he has a baby on the way, and his job matters because it puts food on his table. So, waiting till 2025 is not acceptable to have a meaningful contract. We cannot continue to work in an environment where these things happen, and we're not safe to express our concerns.
Tanya James.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. McDade, and staff. My name is Tanya James. I reside in the Princeville District. I reside in the Princeville District. I stand before you in support of meaningful collective bargaining resolution for teachers and staff to have a seat at the table now. Under this board's direction, it is true, you've done some good stuff, from having some of the largest raises for teachers in this, in the history of this school division, opening up schools safely, and students continue to thrive in a welcoming and inclusive environment. But this board also has the capacity to do more. It has been proven, here in Virginia and other places, that schools where teachers have collective bargaining rights, they have lower teacher turnover and lower transfer out rates. Empowering teachers through meaningful collective bargaining is the way that we make Prince William County schools the best in our Commonwealth. Thank you.
Brandy Provenzano.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. I know what you're thinking, what could she possibly have left to say? She has said it all, multiple times and many ways, to everyone that will listen. But tonight, I do have something new to say. I'd like to share an anecdote with you about a meeting that I recently attended, after school, outside contract hours, for two and a half hours. But I digress. At this meeting, the school social worker, psychologist, case manager, two general education teachers, an interpreter, both parents, and an advocate were all in attendance. We sat around and discussed a struggling student. We spent two and a half hours debating and deliberating about how best to support that struggling student. The parents had some great ideas that had worked in the past. After all, they do know their children. The school social worker shared some strategies that she thought would be really useful. The gen ed teacher had some observations to share, and the case manager mentioned some of the struggles that the student was encountering in the classroom. Together, they crafted all sorts of interventions and strategies for the student. Finally, it was my turn to speak, and you guys know how much I love to speak. I looked at them and asked a simple question. Has anyone asked the student what's going on? Has anyone approached the student and asked them what strategies might be effective? And all of the well-educated, well-meaning adults looked extremely confused. How could so many professionals come together with such great intentions and forget to invite the one person who should be seated at the table? Our table should be big enough, wide enough, long enough, and most of all, inclusive enough for everyone to have a seat. Educators and staff members deserve a seat. But just like the student in my story, unless we're invited, respected, and valued, we cannot provide meaningful feedback to improve the educational environment of all employees and all students. Tonight, as an ally, I am here to advocate for those who do not share in my privilege. I am here to remind the students and staff members of Prince William County schools who feel targeted, vilified, or disheartened by recent events, don't give up. Our table is big enough, long enough, wide enough, and inclusive enough for everyone. And should that table run out of chairs, I will always stand up and give you mine, so that you may rest your weary feet and become a part of a meaningful conversation about you. Thank you.
Senator McPike. Then we have Jared Gay, Patty Kuntz, Tracy Blake, Aubrey Vericon. Senator McPike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board. Jeremy McPike, State Senator from the 29th District, Coles District resident, and speak to you tonight on collective bargaining. I'm here as one of the members of the Senate, and it passed by one vote, to enable this legislation to happen, because it's important that the members of your workforce, the teachers, the support workers, have a voice and a collective partnership with you. It's important, as a parent of five kids that have gone through and are currently going through Prince William County schools, first off, thank you for continuing to support and making sure Prince William County education is the best it can be, and you continue to grow. And you grow because of the workforce that you enable. And with this partnership with the meaningful collective bargaining agreement, you're going to continue to strengthen that. And you heard earlier today the request that the collective bargaining agreement more mirror and reflect that of the county governments. And I think that's important to make sure that there are similar rules of the road in what the county board and supervisors have been working to strengthen in that language, and I hope to see some of the similar ones here today. I know you've got lots more to speak to tonight and lots of the speakers, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time, but I wanted to make sure you heard as one who deliberated in the General Assembly, this enabling legislation, the importance to give workers a voice. Thank you.
Jared Gay.
Thank you. My name is Jared Gay, and my address is on file with the clerk. So at the beginning of every school year, I have my students do something that we call a class constitution. They craft nine rules as first individuals, then as a small group, then as a whole class, to govern how we are going to interact with each other over the course of the school year. Every year that I do this, I do it for the same reason, that I think it's important to start off the year with an environment that promotes mutual respect and empowerment. And I think that the best way to ensure that, or to at least take a good first step in that direction, is to give students the opportunity to come up on their own with the kinds of procedures and kind of governing philosophies that they want to see implemented in the classroom, both with regards to how they expect me to treat them, but also with how they expect to treat me and how they expect to treat one another. And indeed, every year, every class, every category, the word "respect" appears. And these are students coming up with this on their own. You know, I'm not leading them in that direction. And that speaks to something that hopefully is becoming more obvious as I've started talking, which is that respect is, I think, what all people ultimately desire in their interactions with others, both people under, who, over whom they have authority, as well as people who have authority over them, and people who are their peers. And I think that it's important, kind of at the stage that we're at, to stop and ask ourselves if teachers in this country, in this Commonwealth, but especially in this county, feel respected right now. And I think if you were to ask many educators, as well as many who are no longer educators in the county, they would say that on the whole, right now, they don't. I can't speak for everybody, but speaking for myself and some of the people that I've spoken with over the past couple of years, teaching is already largely perceived as a thankless and underpaid profession. And people who pursue that career do so because they care, and they want to do something that is meaningful and helps others. But we've seen record numbers of people becoming so disheartened with what they are encountering in the classroom, the decreasing levels of support and respect from the community and from elected officials that they receive, and they're leaving. And I think that collective bargaining is an opportunity not only to ensure that we are not continuing to lose educators to neighboring counties and to, you know, losing educators in the profession as a whole, but that we are taking the opportunity to do the right thing and to give the same level of voice in determining their own working conditions as I try to give to my students in terms of crafting their own learning conditions. I think that if you are committed to that, that this resolution will need to change so that many of the things that President Hansford spoke to a few moments ago will be reflected. Thank you. Have a wonderful night. Bye.
Patty Kuntz. Patty Kuntz. Tracy Blake, then Aubrey Vericon and Ken Nar will be our next three. Tracy Blake. Okay. Aubrey Vericon.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Vericon. I am a teacher in Prince William County, and my child attends school in the Princeville District. Overwhelmingly, our families in Prince William County rely on our public schools provided by Prince William County employees. My daughter's school currently opens their doors 10 minutes earlier than the starting bell schedule to accommodate the large population of students who attend the school. The administration can't help that the number of students is so high. The administration can't help that the only way to get to the school is either by bus or car, because the area lacks infrastructure to accommodate walkers to school. The school day is not 10 minutes shorter, though, because we can't take away from the academic time. I am in a parent group for the school, and I know a lot of parents are very excited to be able to drop off their students earlier and that it is such a convenience for them. But what about the teachers? Can you imagine being required to come to work 10 minutes earlier than scheduled and not get paid? That's almost an hour a week of unpaid work required by the teachers. This is what other duties as assigned looks like in Prince William County schools. Teachers being required to work outside of school hours because technically it's in our contract that we can expect other duties as assigned, it doesn't say that we are paid for those duties. That four-letter phrase is what motivated me and many of my peers to sign our cards for collective bargaining in the spring. This is why I believe that it is critical for school employees to have meaningful collective bargaining rights and a real seat at the table to negotiate for the things they need to educate our students and families. The school division's management has drafted a resolution. However, the current draft does not meet the standard of meaningful collective bargaining as established nationally and by other Virginia jurisdictions. For example, Section 5 in the draft lists school board rights. Prohibited subjects of bargaining include H: determine the nature and scope of the work performed by school board employees. It just sounds like a more wordy version of the school board can create duties as assigned, and the bargaining unit has no say. The timeline for the resolution is also troublesome. There are still 327 certified job openings on the PWCS website. I checked before I came here. If neighboring school districts have an agreement for next school year, but PWCS does not, how else will our district be able to compete to attract new employees and maintain the ones we currently have? And really, it should be 328 openings, because all the kindergarten classes at my child's school are over the state limit. No teacher has been hired, and it isn't listed on the jobs website. I'm here to ask the school board to direct staff to make the necessary changes recommended by the workers here today. The changes requested by union members are simple, clear, and are needed to ensure that collective bargaining will work well for everyone in Prince William. Prince William County educators shouldn't have fewer rights than their peers. Thank you.
Ken Nar.
Ken Nar, Gainesville District. Our educators are some of the most competent and dedicated professionals in our county. We continuously hear great things about our teachers and support staff personnel. These committed individuals love our students and working in our schools, so why do we need collective bargaining agreement? We need a collective bargaining agreement because the collective workforce is being overworked and underpaid. Workforce solidarity is the only way we can ensure our educators and support staff are adequately compensated in the out-years. Despite the raises and several months of hard and aggressive recruitment, we were short several hundred licensed teachers, teachers aides, bus drivers, school nurses, security personnel, counselors, cafeteria workers, and substitute teachers. The incentives offered were insufficient to attract new professionals into our schools. Professional, or personal shortages are compromising our world-class education. The national shortage of educators and school staff personnel is more acute in Northern Virginia. Six of the top 15 richest counties in the nation are in Northern Virginia. Neighboring counties pay their personnel 15% to 20% more than we do. Prince William County is currently unable to compete. Future raises must exceed those of our neighbors' raises by 5% for the next three to five years to simply catch up. Higher wages would tell our teachers and staff members we appreciate their devoted service and continued sacrifice. They would attract highly skilled educators to our schools, which would decrease the workload on our current staff. More bus drivers would allow the school day to return to a more appropriate start and end time. They would allow more of our teachers and staff to live in our community, and most importantly, they would ensure the learning and safety of all of our students. We need a collective bargaining agreement, because nobody can negotiate in earnest without adequate revenue. Prince William County needs to raise its commercial tax base considerably to successfully compete. Without a significant increase in commercial tax revenue, we will continue to have hundreds of unfilled positions and overwork our current personnel. Our educators need a collective bargaining agreement to thrive in our county. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the non-agenda items. We're going to have Heather Oberly, Shayna Moreno, Marjorie Sieg, Janelle Anderson, and Leslie Tom. Those will be the next five. Heather Oberly.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and the school board. My name is Heather Oberly, and I am an educator in Prince William County schools, and my address is on file. First, thank you, Dr. McDade, for respecting the speakers at every school board meeting by acknowledging their existence through looking at them when they speak and acknowledging their presence with eye contact. Second, I'm here to tell you I'm tired. It is only October 4th, and I am already tired. The work of an educator does not stop when we leave the school building. There is not enough time in the school day to assess student needs, create lessons to match their individual needs, score the assignments, recreate the assignments to reassess the students, implement required testing, look at the data to adjust future lessons, build relationships with our students, and the list goes on. After 20-plus years of teaching, I am in the groove and with these responsibilities. And my family knows not to talk to me when I pull out the English books. Three years ago, something changed. The number of required professional development increased at an alarming and unrealistic rate. With the pandemic, it appeared as if people needed to justify their jobs, so they created PD for teachers who aren't working on Mondays anyway and needed something to do. Believe me, we were all working on Mondays. Pre-pandemic, I did not use technology, except for the gradebook and email. I became the expert in my school with technology. We were working hard. The amount of required PD has only steadily increased since. While preparing this speech, I looked through the PD list that was sent out to everyone and found that I needed, from yesterday forward, a minimum of 48 hours more required PD for this year. That does not include August and September. Last night, I received the notice that my license is up for renewal this year. That means I have five more hours added to my list, one of which is child abuse. Prince William County has their child abuse PD I have to do. The state of Virginia has another child abuse PD I have to do. So I'm doing two for the same thing. Then this morning, I received another required professional development, but this one's only 15 minutes, for Title IX. Every day brings a new pre-PD. Some of the issues that I have, all of these have to be done after contract hours because we don't have enough staff. They are on top of our required duties. I'm a department chair. We have to go to school, our building meetings, CLTs. The amount for new teachers is unrealistic and will never allow, envelop, invite them into this job. Some of it also appears insulting.
Thank you, Ms. Oberly.
I've had to give the star test three times. I'm trained on it this coming Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Oberly. Thank you. Shayna Moreno. Marjorie Sieg.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. McDade, fellow teachers, and parents. My name is Marjorie Sieg, and my address is on file. I have been a dedicated and hard-working teacher at Prince William County for 30 years. Not once have I ever, ever come to this school board to make a statement. So you may be asking yourself, why is she here now? I am here tonight because of the extremely heavy burden of required professional development that has been placed on us teachers. After two years of unprecedented times in which teachers taught virtually, in-person, or hybrid roles, we worked through the pandemic. We went above and beyond what we were told to do. On the last day of school this past June, we were told to go check our emails before we left our building for the summer and said to ourselves, what's so important that we need to check right away? You're probably wondering, what was so important? So I'm glad you're asking. It was compliance-based professional learning that consisted of about 12 pages of Canvas and self-paced courses. After two years of difficult times, this is what we get before shutting things down for the year? Instead of thanking us, way to go, teachers! This is a slap in our face and didn't need to happen like this. Yet that was not all. When we returned to the building at the beginning of the school year, there was more. I counted about 28 hours of compliance-related professional learning, and every time I complete a course, one to two more comes along. It's like playing whack-a-mole game with no end in sight. We're overworked, overburdened with this compliance-based professional learning. I'm not a nurse, not a doctor. I'm not a nurse, not a doctor, so why are we required to take courses that are not teaching-related? We have full-time nurses, so why do we need anything beyond our CPR training? What are you really expecting teachers to perform medically beyond CPR needs? We're not medical professionals. I am currently working on a second master's degree from George Mason in teaching culturally and linguistically diverse and exceptional learners in the international context. Yet, I must sit down and listen to these compliance professional learning, uh, learning from people who do not know my job and do not know what I need to teach my students. I am a professional. I am a professional. I am a professional, and I know what courses need to be able to do my job. Most of these required professional development courses do not meet my job performance. Let me ask you this. What happened to a catalog signup for courses? When do we have time for these? When are you expecting us to do this? Surely, the non-teaching staff of Prince William are able to complete all required training during their normal business hours. This is one of the reasons why teachers need to seat at the table. I urge you to more-
Thank you, Ms. Sieg.
-move forward on passing a fair and meaningful resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Tom. I'm a resident and voter in the Coles District and a special education teacher in the Gainesville District. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for affording me the opportunity to speak to you. I am once again asking you for your show of support for educators, support professionals, and school communities by making amends and actually creating a meaningful resolution for collective bargaining. This is not my first time speaking in front of you all. It's probably not going to be my last. Each time I do this, I'm often met with a response from my colleagues that I'm brave for speaking out. At first, I was shocked by this. My colleagues are teachers. We literally speak in front of an audience all day, every single day. But then I'm left thinking that their fear of addressing the school board is a concern that their voices will be ignored, or worse, that they will be, become a target of retaliation. You've heard several speakers say that tonight, and I think that should sit with you for a while. Teachers are scared. So are students. No one should be afraid of advocating on behalf of educators, students, or our communities. It should not be an act of bravery to speak up, address concerns, or step foot in our schools. Division-wide educators and students are listening to your words, and they're watching your actions. Most are weary and desperate for their voices to be heard. Some are nearing decisions to walk away completely. If there have been closed-door discussions happening with lawyers to debate the dignity of our staff and students or to determine exactly how much we should protect the basic rights that is concerning, and that should sit with you all as well. My colleagues are correct that standing in front of you is an act of bravery. I will continue to speak to show our staff, our students, and our community members that this is not an act of bravery but an act of faith. I believe in you, each and every one of you, and your determination to uphold the values of equity and inclusivity for all Prince William County students, educators, and support staff. We should be heard. We should be proud. We should be unafraid. Thank you.
The next five will be Ash Hanneman, Paul Huber, Jalen Custis, Bora Yun, Anandia Sampaath. Ash Hanneman first.
Hello, I am Ash Hanneman from Patriot High School. I'm here today to discuss the topic on transgender rights in the education system. Now, some believe that transgender rights do not exist, or transgender people do not exist, even though I and many others are standing here before you today, and that they do not deserve the same rights as other people who identify themselves outside of the given, of the, that they don't identify themselves outside of the given gender at birth. We are seen as confused, threats, and supposed criminals for just being who we are. Discrimination is not hard to find in Governor Yonkin's draft policy. It's painfully evident. Now, I understand it may be hard for some to find, but let me point it out for you. The first thing I will mention is that part of this policy allows parents to refuse guidance counselor access for their students. I do not believe people realize how big of a negative impact this can have, this can have on not just LGBTQ+ students, but also straight identifying people. Allowing parents to deny access to counselors can have some very deadly consequences for students that rely on school counselors as a support system where they do not have anyone else to turn to. Not only is this detrimental to people's mental health, it also makes students trust the school system a whole lot less than they already do. Secondly, this draft policy denies the school's ability to be able to prohibit malicious dead naming and misgendering. Dead naming is the act of referring to someone's legal name, which they're trying to separate themselves from due to and not aligning with their gender identity. A recent study published in the Journal of Adolescent Health cited by Deborah Temkin and Claudia Vega demonstrates the power of affirming transgender youth identities. For each additional context in which a transgender youth's chosen name is used, the risk of suicidal behavior is reduced by more than half. Another study published in the Pediatrics finds that transgender youth who have fully socially transitioned to their gender identity, have been supported, and have been supported in doing so, do not have elevated depressive symptoms compared to the broader population. In an era in which overall youth suicide rates have significantly increased over the last decade, it is critical to take steps to reduce risk for suicide. Thirdly, it requires schools to forcibly out transgender and gender-adversive students. This can be so dangerous to students who have parents against the LGBTQ+ community, this risks, this risks students being kicked out, forced to go to corrective camps, and/or being physically and/or mentally abused. The last point I'm going to mention is that it prohibits schools from acknowledging non-binary students. Teens like me and those here to support the LGBTQ+ community are still developing physically and mentally. Telling kids that what they identify with does not exist can be extremely harmful to their self-esteem. Is Yonkin trying to back children into a corner and force them into horrible situations just because he doesn't believe that something's real? Is he purposely trying to kill off the transgender youth because he doesn't want to accept the change of equality? Yonkin's draft could kill thousands of children if passed. It is not only killing your own LGBTQ+ children, but the children of your friends, your neighbors, your brothers, your sisters, and sometimes your own brother and sisters who identify in the community. The reason we're trying so hard to stop this policy is because people are dying, and all this is doing is helping that kid feel isolated.
Thank you very much.
You didn't stop that, did you? Uh, excuse me. Am I ready? My name is Paul Huber. My address is on file. I'm a father of six to an elementary school. There are too many parents, law enforcement, and government officials and teachers that I have met and communicated with that agree that more needs to be done in better securing our schools. I spent a career as an agent with the DEA and the FBI. I have experienced people being killed in my line of work, including a good friend and fellow agent. I have seen where proper operational planning and risk assessment succeeds, and when it fails and results in the loss of life. I have trained law enforcement command staff from across the country in risk management at the FBI's National Academy. We have an ongoing risk management problem within the district. Assigning unarmed security aides in every elementary school is a small step forward, but falls short in addressing the depth and immediacy of this problem. The shootings are indiscriminate of school level. They are indiscriminate of places of worship, shopping venues, public gatherings. I was with my children the weekend of the shooting of two persons at the Colbenton Campus in May. There were 692 mass shootings alone last year. In the five or 10 minutes it takes for an SRO to respond to an active shooting from another venue, countless lives will be lost. An on-scene SRO will be able to immediately respond, engage the target, and in doing so, take the focus away for a moment from the students and teachers, potentially saving lives in the process. They will be able to immediately communicate for backup and where to specifically respond in the school. The aftermath investigations of school shootings nationwide reveal what we see far too often: teachers physically placing their bodies in front of their children in a last attempt to save their lives. What incredible courage! What love! We are moved by this. It causes us pause, and we ready ourselves to make changes to counter this potentiality in our own district. But with time, far too often, we lose focus and resolve to mitigate this ongoing threat. Shootings are on the rise in the county. Speaking with one of my children, who is a Prince William cop attending Chief Newsom's safety briefings, we know this is a fact. School districts across the country are ensuring SROs in all their schools that this can be done if we choose to. Tonight, we are afforded police protection. We gather here and ensure the security, yet many of our children, many months now from Uvalde, are not. Why does this remain so? Thank you, Ms. Dahlgefor and Ms. Wall, for your efforts. Expand the pool of applicants to include those trained at other law enforcement agencies and work with DCGAS-
Thank you, Ms. Huber.
...and the Prince William Police Department to bring about-
Thank you very much.
-furthering the SRO program. Thank you.
Good evening. First and foremost, I would just like to say thank you to all the teachers who are inside the building today and also for helping me, because teachers don't only teach you academic things, they also teach you life skills. Anyway, good evening, Superintendent McDade, school board members, Chairman McTeef. My name is Jalen Custis. I live in the Woodbridge District. At the last meeting, members of the public raised their concerns over school safety due to recent incidents that occurred in our county. I would just like to say that in my eight years inside the Prince William County school system, there has always been substance and weapons getting inside our schools. I would like to see the board come together and add the security specialists to their agenda to provide a public briefing on how the school operates when safely, when safety-related threats, safely-present threats, such as when we have someone speak on behalf of the budget and where you, as a board member, ask them questions. Or where, for example, during the last board meeting, we heard directly from mental health program, programs teams, doing so, I believe, will restore public confidence in the work I know you are doing behind the scenes. I'm glad that this has been brought up publicly, and it looks like the staff here cares about safety and security inside our schools. Hopefully, there will be further action taken to prevent any future incidents from, that may occur. Thank you. My name is Jalen Custis, and I reside in the Woodbridge District.
Okay. That wraps that up. Move on. Next, agenda item will be, where am I at? What am I on? Student, uh, student representative matters. Where is my script here? Who do we got tonight? Donya. Uh, our student representative this evening, so this is our time for our student to hear from our student. We have student representative, Donya Sharifi, senior at Gainesville High School. Ms. Sharifi.
Good evening to the school board, superintendent, and Prince William County school community. I hope you're all doing well, as you just said. My name is Donya. I'm one of the student representatives for this year. I just want to talk about something that we did yesterday. The other reps and I had the privilege of joining in a meeting with the student senate. For those of you that don't know, the student senate is composed of one junior or senior from each high school within Prince William County. The student senate is just one of the many ways our students can get involved in sharing their voices to those that make decisions. So in our meeting with the senate yesterday, we discussed several topics, one of which is how they view diversity and inclusivity within their schools. The senate each spoke about their respective high schools, and across the board, they noted that the affinity organizations such as Hispanic Student Association, Black Student Union, MSA, Asian American Student Association, amongst their multicultural and international clubs, had an increase in membership and involvement of their schools within the cultural atmospheres at their high schools. Within my own school, Gainesville High School, I saw this with our multicultural club, growing from 80 to 160 members in this past year. This is something I'm very proud of within our schools because our county is extremely diverse, and it's critical for our schools to reflect that, which they do. Additionally, in the past weeks, several schools have had peaceful walkout demonstrations, which all went well as students were able to peacefully voice their opinions and concerns about issues important to them without disruptions or difficulties. The students appreciate the opportunity they have been given to give their voice of their opinions within the school regarding things that affect the students on the state level. Additionally, in our student senate meeting yesterday, we talked about resources for our current juniors and seniors, and a lot of the discussion did talk about college applications, color preparation, and other opportunities for students beyond high school that was in college. One student mentioned that while there was amazing SAT resources, as the SAT is heavily emphasized in our county, he didn't believe that there was enough resources for ACT preparation. While some students may do well in the SAT, some may do better in the ACT, and we were told that not many students were even aware that there was an alternative to the SAT until this year. And it's kind of late for the students who are seniors to prepare on top of their schoolwork and applications. The reps and I are hoping to resolve that by making easy access to resources such as the ACT easier to emphasize there are different paths for careers after high school. And then lastly, another topic that we discussed were the three goals that the senate and reps have for this first half of the year, which are drafting the student bills of rights, planning a fall mini leadership conference, and organizing student voice committees. While nothing is official, we did brainstorm some possible clauses for the student bill of rights. Just a little bit of a teaser. All students have the right to equitable academic resources. All students have the right to learn in a nondiscriminatory environment that reflects diverse and inclusive background. All students have rights to equitable disciplinary process, and amongst other things. As for our fall mini leadership conference, we want to include the student senate, reps, SCA presidents, along with two students nominated from each high school that may have their voices not heard as much. And this smaller conference is where we will build a strong community and allow students to network with other similar-minded students within our county to talk about different products and topics such as equity in school environment, resource access and availability, and inclusivity within our school and in the curriculum. If this produces great feedback, we also hope to connect to our middle school students as their voice is also critical in decision-making. Lastly, our student voice committees will be composed of leaders and underrepresented students within each school that will hold their own town hall meetings. The discussion within these town halls at each respective school will be sent to the reps and board to discuss trends we see across the school, either as positives or issues that need to be reevaluated. Overall, it was a successful meeting with the Prince William County Student Senate. I have no doubt that this year will bring greater connection between our students and the school board. I'm excited for what this year has for our students in our county going forward, and if you are a Prince William County student interested in getting involved, do not hesitate to reach out to me, the other reps, or the senate. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good rest of your night.
Thank you very much, Donya. Moving on, next to superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. McTeef. Good evening. I wish to begin with extending our thoughts and prayers for those impacted by Hurricane Ian throughout this week. Ways that we can come together as a community and support is by contributing supplies, donating blood, and providing whatever support we can as a community. I also wish to acknowledge the demonstrations students held at some high schools across the division last week. PWCS students exercised their First Amendment rights, and school administration and staff members worked to ensure that there was no disruption to instruction or that it was minimized. Through these demonstrations, students were expressing opinions related to recent guidance provided by the Virginia Department of Education. As a reminder, those who wish to provide comment to the VDOE on their guidance may do so through October 26th on the State of Virginia Regulatory Town Hall website. Being aware, reflective, and engaged as a student, community member, and citizen reflects our school division's commitment to graduate informed, responsible, respectable, and active participants in our great democracy. Looking forward, I wish to highlight National School Bus Safety Week from October 17th through the 21st. This week is an excellent opportunity to recognize and recommit to the importance of safety on and around our school buses. During National School Bus Safety Week, October 19, is designated as School Bus Transportation Employees Appreciation Day. Our appreciation includes bus drivers, bus assistants, and central transportation teams. Our entire transportation operation serves a crucial role in getting our most precious passengers safely to and from school to field trips and home and more. We thank them for their expertise, patience, and concern for our children and their safety. As a reminder, students, parents, and staff between September 28th and October 9th, the 2023-24 School Calendar Survey will be available- 2023-24 School Calendar Survey will be available for comment. A survey link was sent to all active PWCS emails. Staff will present the results to the school board at our first school board meeting in November and the school board will act to decide on the final 2023-24 calendar later this month. Please complete the survey prior to the deadline on October 9th. In last week's end of week letter that I sent on Friday, I unveiled our new brand identity that clearly communicates our mission, vision, and values outlined in our strategic plan launching thriving futures. It was developed internally. The brand's identity is a clear representation of our vision that every student will graduate on time with the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community. The graduation cap is a piece of ceremonial regalia that recognizes a student's rite of passage upon mastery of educational goals. The mortarboard symbolizes the achievement of a solid academic foundation as well as a launchpad toward endless possibilities. A sparkling shooting star is associated with self-fulfillment and advancement in life. The shape of the shooting star's tail represents a tassel and the dynamic motion captures the excitement of our graduates turning their tassels and launching their thriving futures. The graduation cap sits atop the four letters PWCS in reference to PWCS's four commitments in lifting our students as our highest priority. This change occurred immediately on our digital platforms and will be phased in for other materials as they cycle through replacements. Finally, as PWCS will be closed in observance of Yonkabor tomorrow, I want to wish a meaningful fast to all who practice. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDay. And we love the logo. Fantastic. Congratulations. Moving on next to 1601, Board Matters. We have an update on for information to policy 134, which is citizen participation. This.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think this is me.
Yep. I will turn it over to Division Counsel.
So, Mr. Chairman, this, as you know, the series 100 of the policy manual belongs to the school board and the citizen participation policy, there was a desire on the part of the board to make a few tweaks, not a major overhaul, but a few tweaks to that policy. And those include providing some more specific definition of what a business partner is, if a business partner chooses to speak as a, as a part of citizen comment, and updating the sign up procedures. As you may know, the, the sign up procedures to speak at board meetings, sign up started as soon as the agenda was posted, which could be a fluctuating time depending on when the agenda is ready. So the new policy changes that to be a fixed time so that everybody's clear when the, when the sign up period begins. And finally, the most important and substantive change was to eliminate the distinction between speaking on agenda versus non-agenda items. There were occasions where the agenda item speaker list was not full and I think there was a desire to increase participation where we could and doing that is by, you'll no longer, if the board passes this at the next meeting, then speakers will no longer have to identify an agenda item versus non-agenda item to speak and will just be signed up in order of contact to the clerk. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. This is on for information. We will be voting on this in two weeks at the next board meeting and we're happy to take comment from citizens by email as well as during comment time. Seeing that there's no, Ms. Jesse, you have a question?
I just wanted to. I know we sent information in on this policy. Was there a reason why we didn't consider the two minutes each for, so we could have more students, more speakers?
It's my reflection that that wasn't not, that was discussed, not a majority of the board's decision.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we'll move on to 1602. This is the collective bargaining resolution. This also is on for information. We have a presentation by Division Counsel, Mr. Wade Anderson, who will update us on where we stand on this resolution. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's very weird to be on this side of the, the dais. You all look different from here.
I look thinner.
Well, I hope the same is true for me. Let me see if I can get this to work and I have my own printouts because I can't see that far. So what is collective bargaining? For those of, you know, we had several presentations on this and, but essentially, it's the relationship between an employer and a designated labor organization representing a unit of employees to negotiate a written contract outlining the terms and memorializing the terms and conditions of their employment. Why are we talking about this now? We've, as we've mentioned in prior presentations, two years ago, state law changed to allow localities to, and school boards, to allow collective bargaining for its employees if it decided to do so. And we'll talk about the timeline here in just a little bit. As you know, on March 18th in 2022, we were in receipt, the school board received a petition from the PWEA for collective bargaining, asking us to adopt a collective bargaining resolution on behalf of all certified employees. That began a 120-day clock within which time the board was required to take a vote on whether to allow collective bargaining. There were some rules issued by the board and amended by the board on March 24th and April 6th. And then on May 10th of 2022, PWCS verified that the PWEA had submitted, in fact, all of the signatures of a majority of the members of the certified collective bargaining unit. Once that was verified, the school board received another presentation on collective bargaining on June 1st. And then finally, on June 15th, school board, the school board voted to adopt a resolution providing for collective bargaining and directed the superintendent and division staff to draft a resolution for the board's consideration. And that leaves us to tonight where we are presenting for the first time to you and the public, the administration's proposed collective bargaining resolution. And as, as you'll note, this was at the very beginning of the summer.
Can Wade, which slide are you on? Just have the advanced slide.
Sorry, I didn't write that. As you'll remember, June 15th was right at the beginning of the, the summer break and staff diligently worked over the summer with the superintendent to, as the board had commanded, to come up with a resolution which is being presented now. It's important, I think, as with context, that we understand the sort of unique constraints that apply to collective bargaining in Virginia. First of all, Virginia law expressly provides that no resolution and no adopted by a school board can restrict the board's authority to establish its budget or appropriate funds. So there is a significant limitation in the law itself that is a constraint on collective bargaining. Also, the Virginia law is very vague as to any of the details. It really does leave it to every locality and every school board to come up with its own version of collective bargaining. There's wide latitude on the part of the board to make these decisions and I think it's also important to recognize distinctions between school boards and localities. Localities obviously have taxing authority. In Virginia, school boards do not. As you know, we have a financial arrangement with the county that's been longstanding. We get 57.23% of the general, John, remind me what the term is, general? General county revenues. He was very specific that I have to say general county revenues. That that is the agreement we have. And so that's what we get and that's what we have to spend. The interplay between contract provisions and obligations and other laws. In other words, since Virginia did not have collective bargaining until recently, many of the things you would see in collective bargaining agreements and the framework already existed in Virginia law. An example of that would be the state grievance procedures. There have been state grievance procedures in the Virginia law for a long time and every school board was, is required to implement those procedures. So in other words, there was already many of the things you would see in collective bargaining because we didn't have it in Virginia, those things were enshrined in statutes. So that's something to keep in mind. And also, it's important to recognize that Virginia law specifically and expressly prohibits employees from striking and that is very clear. So what are the components of our resolution? First, it's a determination of appropriate bargaining units. In other words, what groups of employees will we allow to bargain? Again, the school board has a tremendous amount of leeway on that. How do, how does an election occur? How do the employees choose what, whether they want to have a union and if so, what union they want to have? That's in our resolution. The determination of the subjects for collective bargaining, in other words, what things may they bargain over is in our resolution. The collective bargaining process, what's the timetable? There are budget guidelines. The state has very specific laws about when we have to have our budgets approved that we are bound by. Impasse procedures, what if we and the union cannot, or the whoever is the, is the collective exclusive bargaining agent for that employee group, what if we can't reach an agreement? And there's a deadlock. These are called impasse procedures and the impasse procedures govern what happens in that instance. So that's contained in the resolution. The determination of what constitutes prohibited or unfair labor practices is in there. In other words, it prohibits certain employer conduct on the behalf of the school board. It prohibits certain conduct by the union. And also, it establishes a mechanism to administer the resolution provisions and how violations would be dealt with. So looking at the specific resolution. PWCS proposed a resolution has two bargaining units. The first bargaining unit is what we call grade 12 employees. These are licensed employees that have licenses by, either issued by either the Virginia Department of Education or the Virginia Department of Health. This would include things like nurses, school counselors, teachers, librarians, instructional technology coaches, athletic trainers. The second bargaining unit is essentially anyone else that is not in the other bargaining unit with some exceptions. That would be teaching assistants, bus drivers, technology support specialists, and clerical employees. But there are some employees that we've excluded from collective bargaining and those include supervisors, employees who have access to confidential information such as HR and finance employees, administrative employees such as principals and assistant principals. Interns, volunteers, and temporary employees are excluded. Instructional specialists are excluded and participants and, and participants who have retired but, but work in our retirement opportunity program. So they are already retirees from Prince William and they participate in our extended retirement program. They would be excluded. So how would an election work? An election would work when 30% of the members of a bargaining unit express interest in being represented by a union and they would do that by having signatures or cards, signature cards, and submitting those to a neutral third party. The neutral third party would establish the procedures for a secret ballot election. The secret ballot election is required by Virginia code, secret ballot. The union has to get a majority of the votes in the election. So once, once they've shown interest and the neutral decides and verifies that yes, 30% of the employees who work in Prince William in this bargaining unit, so let's just call them the grade 12 employees, the licensed employees. Once the union, once the neutral has verified that 30% have agreed that they want to have an election, the notice is given to HR and the, the parties start discussing how the, the election will occur, what the parameters will be, and it will take place in 45 days. There would then be an election by the members of the unit and at least, and this would be everybody, whether you're in a, whether you're a member of the association or the union that's seeking to be nominated as the exclusive bargaining agent or not. And at least 50% of the members in the unit would have to vote. So there's a participation rate that we expect. That would be, and as an example, we have roughly 7,000 and some certified employees. So let's say there are 7,000, at least 3,500 of those employees would have to vote on whether to have a union. And if the union gets 50% plus one of those, so in that case, it would be 3,500 have to, there are 7,000, so 3,500 would have to vote and of that, the union would have to get 1,751. So as long as they get 1,751 votes in that, in that, and of course, it would depend on how many are in the unit on the day of the election. That changes, we have, you know, from day to day. And they would vote in person. Assuming that they approve of the union and they nominate, they elect the union to be their exclusive bargaining agent, then they would be allowed to bargain over wages, benefits, and other terms and conditions of employment. So going back to this concept that there are, because we did not have unions for so long, that the state law has many of these provisions, they wouldn't be able to bargain, for instance, over Virginia retirement system benefits. We're required by law to enroll employees in the VRS and the VRS retirement system would not be something for, by which the school board has any control over and therefore, that's a benefit they could not, the bargaining unit could not negotiate over. And they also could not negotiate over things that have been reserved to the board. Some of those things reserved to the board are the, the ability to discipline employees, the ability to promote and assign and schedule transfer, and transfer employees, to determine job qualifications. That would be a school board right. Staffing levels, board functions, and organizational structure of the board itself. Set the budget, obviously, we talked about that earlier. They could, we could not bargain over the school board's ability to contract out services to vendors or anything, anybody else we might bring back in. And then to set work roles and standards of conduct. But there are also union and employee rights in the resolution. What are some of those? The union would have a right to meet with employees during non-work time, as an example. They would have a right to get quarterly lists of employees' contact information, including name, job title, department, and work email address. This is, I want to be clear, this is not their home contact information. This is their work contact information. They would have the right to receive authorized dues deducted from employees' pay. Employees would have the right to discuss union matters and terms and conditions of employment with each other, so long as it didn't interfere with their work. They also would have the right vis a vis the union to fair representation. So, and this is a point I think that needs to be clarified, if those seven, if those 1,751 votes yes for the union, all 7,000 employees are then represented by the union, regardless of whether the employees are members of the union or whether they pay dues to the union. The union then has a duty of fair representation for all 7,000 employees. So employees would have a right to that fair representation. They also would have the ability to meet directly with management without union intervention, except in a limited circumstance. If the resolution, so if you're an employee in the bargaining unit and you want to meet with PWCS administration to talk about some personnel concern you have, no resolution that we could offer to that employee could contradict or expand what is in the, the collective bargaining agreement we have with the union. So once that matter's been determined and decided in our contract, remember, the whole point of collective bargaining is to get a written contract and have terms and conditions in there that are enforceable against the parties. So long as that employees, the resolution they were seeking did not run counter to anything in that contract, then that would be okay. The employee would have a right to that. They would not, however, have a right to any resolution of their problem that contradicted or was not provided for in the collective bargaining agreement. Now, what's the timetable? And we heard, you know, some consternation, I think, from speakers about the fact that it's not 20, it's not until 2025. That's sort of a misnomer because that's fiscal year 2025. So I want to walk through that so that I make sure everybody's clear. The resolution states that negotiations between the school board and the union cannot begin until on or after April 1st of any year when an agreement is sought to be effective at the beginning of the next fiscal year. For example, negotiations for a collective bargaining agreement scheduled to take effect July 1st of 2024, which is fiscal year 2025, could not begin until on or after April 1st of 2023. Well, then that's this April. So if the board were to pass this resolution tonight, I know it's not up for a vote, of course, but if we were. course, but if we were, there still would have to be the showing of interest, there still would have to be an election, there still would have to be a, the union who is elected presumably, would then have to negotiate in order to get the contract in place, and it just wouldn't be doable until, because of course, our budget, our budget this year is set, and we're in the process of setting the next year's budget, which then has to be presented. So that's the timeline. So a collective, a contract, a collective bargaining agreement between the union and the school board, the deadline for that would be December 1st of next year. So I know it sounds like it's a long way away, but because of the budget cycles and when you have to plan for how much money you're going to need, that collective bargaining agreement would be in place by December, need to be in place by December of next year. Meanwhile, remember, the negotiating started in April. So about, whatever, seven months from now, something like that. There's also impasse procedures. So what if, what if the school board cannot reach an agreement with the union on any particular issue? There's impasse procedures in place, which are modeled on Arlington County's resolution. And then if agreement is not reached by October 1st, then either party can say, there's an impasse. We've reached an impasse, we can't, we're done. We've tried our best, we can't get it done. Then either party could request mediation with the neutral third party. That would have to continue for 30 days, and we would share, the parties would share the cost of that mediation equally in attempts to get, again, by the December 1st deadline to get some movement on the impasse. What's an unfair labor practice? So there are unfair labor practices by the school board in the resolution, there are unfair labor practices by the union in the resolution. First, the school board. The school board, it would be an unfair labor practice for the school board to interfere with, restrain, or coerce employees in the exercise of their rights guaranteed by this resolution. So there's no retaliation allowed under the resolution. To dominate or interfere with a labor organization or contribute financial support to it. To discriminate in hiring or tenure of employment or any term of condition of employment to encourage or discourage membership in a union. The school board could not discharge or otherwise discriminate against employee because of their exercise of rights guaranteed by this resolution. And the school board could not fail or refuse to negotiate in good faith. A critical concept of the collective bargaining arrangement is the duty of both sides to give it their best and be, and negotiate in good faith. So unfair practices by the union. The same, essentially. Interfere with, restrain, or coerce employees in exercising their rights under this resolution. To deny union membership or fail to represent an employee on any basis prohibited by federal or state or local law. To fail to properly represent an employee in the bargaining unit concerning matters within the scope of collective bargaining and without regard to membership in the union or whether they pay dues. If they failed or refused to negotiate in good faith, again, that's a very standard bilateral responsibility of both parties to negotiate in good faith. They cannot retaliate against any employee for exercising their rights in this resolution, including filing charges against the union or refusing to participate in union activities. And also, of course, they cannot violate the strike statute that says that where they encourage strikes, work stoppages, sick outs, and things of that nature, strikes that are pseudo-strikes. That would be an unfair labor practice. And if one party believed the other party had engaged or committed an unfair labor practice, that party would submit a complaint about that practice to a neutral third party. That third party could either dismiss the complaint or have a hearing on that charge. If a hearing's scheduled, the neutral third party can hear evidence and take, accept evidence on that. And the neutral third party can issue findings of fact and conclusions of law if an unfair labor practice and make a decision on whether an unfair labor practice, some of the things I just talked about, had occurred. And they can order it to be, they can order the offending party to cease and desist that practice. If an employee files an unfair labor practice charge against the union, remember, there are guarantees for the employees vis-à-vis the union as well, a duty of fair representation if they feel as though they have been unfairly, not represented in collective bargaining because they don't pay dues, as an example. Then they may file, the employee may file, an unfair labor practice charge against the union. And if they are successful, they can recover their attorney's fees and costs. And any party aggrieved by, once the neutral third party has made their decision on the unfair labor practice, any party who lost that decision can go to circuit court in the Commonwealth here in Prince William. Let's talk about union dues. I'm not good at advancing the slides. Union dues expressly provides that employees cannot be compelled to pay union dues. And that's been the law since like 2018 or something. And that dues cannot be deducted without written authorization from the employee. And finally, that authorization can be revoked by the employee with 30 days' notice to the school board and the union. And that is the end of the presentation. Essentially, there are FAQs online, as I think the board is aware, that address most or all of these and answer some other questions that people may have. So that's another resource that people can, can get. And of course, the whole resolution, the entire resolution is posted on our board doc system. So I'm happy to take questions if the board has any. Anybody have questions? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for this information. I have a number of questions, so I don't have to need to ask them all in once. I can ask a few and then circle back. My first question is just a clarifying question, then my second question is a little bit more substantive. I'll ask two right now if that's all right?
Yes.
Okay, so my first question is to clarify, in particular, substitute teachers are not part of either bargaining unit, correct? Because they would be considered temporary?
Correct. Substitute teachers, whether short-term or long-term or not in the bargaining unit, are not allowed to collectively bargain.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is about costs. Can you tell me what the costs to the division are expected to be? I know, I understand it's somewhat speculative at this point, but it's narrowing in focus, I think, with this resolution. So with respect to the additional employees that will be, need to be brought on to handle the increased work that this will cause, the division, and maybe any structure that will be needed, could you speak to those?
Sure.
At this point? Thank you.
Sure. I think in one of these presentations, we mentioned that, you know, because we got this question earlier, and I don't remember if it was you who asked or somebody else, but I remember getting the question. And it really is determined by, I think I told you at the time, it's kind of determined on what the resolution looks like, because there are so many variables about what processes are put in place and what things do we have in the resolution that might impact the costs. And so now that we have one, I'm not going to be able to give you a number, actually, but I think it's very reasonable to expect that Dr. Eagle, the chief of human resources, will need additional staff, that Mr. Wallingford in finance, the chief financial officer, will need more staff. Certainly, there will be legal expenses, whether that's from increasing staff in my office or using external counsel. And probably a combination of all those things will be needed. But there will certainly need to be, with two bargaining units of roughly 14,000 employees, there will be administrative costs to that. And there will be things that have to be done to administer any collective bargaining agreement that we reach. The terms of that agreement, making sure there's, that we adhere to the terms. It's a contract, and we need to uphold our end of the contract. And so administering that is going to have a cost. I think it's entirely reasonable to expect that on an annual basis, it will be seven figures. I think that's without question, really, in terms of, because there are also costs, and there are costs, external costs like the costs of mediators in some circumstances. Like if we have to go to a third-party neutral who charges by the hour, then there are those costs, much as they are for legal fees. So that, that's the best I can give you, and without a number.
Okay, thank you. I know it's something that we'll be looking at really closely as this goes forward.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, then Ms. Williams, then Mr. Wilk.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your presentation tonight. When I, when we discussed this in the spring, I discussed one of the reasons why I needed to take my time and make an informed decision was that collective bargaining would substantially change how and other board members advocate for staff. Well, I know you kind of touched on this briefly, and I know it's a very complex question that you may not be able to give an example in every instance. Could you please describe how a board member's advocacy for staff will change after collective bargaining is implemented?
Sure. Section 3D on page three of the resolution discusses, and I touched on this a little bit in the presentation, that nothing prevents an employee from discussing a matter with the school board or the administration if they have some personnel matter. With the important caveat, so long as the resolution is not inconsistent with the CBA. In other words, we can't negotiate with the exclusive bargaining agent for one thing and then deviate from that in an individual case. And there could be any number of examples. I mean, and I'm just going to make something up that it, say it's, you know, the collective bargaining agreement says that every school board employee gets 10 personal days. Again, making this up. But somebody has an issue and they go, they go to the principal, or they come to the administration, say, I really need an extra personal day for XYZ problem. We can't give them 11 when we've promised in the, when we've contracted in the CBA for 10. We've agreed to give them this, and there's no deviation from that in an individual case. So it's not, you know, it's not the perfect example, but it is, it's what I can come up with. My wife's a teacher, she doesn't get 10 personal days. I can just say that's the case. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. I'm going to try to keep it brief. So could you speak to the difference between, sort of at a high level, the difference between what occurs at a school level for collective bargaining and a county level for collective bargaining? Because I believe there's a lot of rhetoric and narrative out in the community of how they should be mirroring each other. But I think there's some very clear distinctions. And I want to be sure that our school division, families, and staff really understand what separates the two, because it's important, as we travel down this road, that we are all on the same page and that we all are working from, as much as we can, the same set of knowledge points. So if you could elaborate a little bit on that, specifically when it comes to ordinances, working groups, taxing authority, that sort of thing.
Well, and you've hit the nail on the head. I mean, the biggest difference between school boards in Virginia and the localities who are negotiating collective bargaining is we don't raise our own revenue. I already mentioned that we have a longstanding policy and agreement with the county that we get 57.23%. That's it. And so whatever that revenue is on the county side, we, they're going to cut off our 57.23% and give it to us to run our school division. The county, on the, on the other side of a negotiating table with the union, let's say the union says we'd like a 7% increase, and over there, I believe it's police and fire, but we want a 7% pay increase. And the county says, well, gee, we can only afford a 5% increase this year. Revenues are down, that, that kind of thing. If push came to shove, and the county decided, you know what, we really do need, we've got big attrition, or for whatever the reason, we need to pay 7%. They can generate revenue to pay 7%. Now, I'll probably get hate mail from them later when they see this. But, but that's the main difference in terms of just revenue generation. We don't have the ability to say, well, yeah, we'll give you 7%, because we don't know if the 57.23% is going to cover that. And so that's a huge difference in terms of, now, there are other specific legal differences in the code. For instance, there are, in Title 15.2, there are statutes that specifically address arbitration, binding arbitration by localities. There's not a similar statute in Title 22.1 that talks about school boards. So there are major legal differences in terms of just what counties have the ability to do and what school boards have the ability to do. So those are some of the main ones, but obviously, the revenue generation is an important one.
I think it's critical. And again, just for the public's knowledge and information, as well as our own school division staff, a lot of that information is referenced in our FAQs.
It is.
And, and anyone who has any further questions, we're happy to address. The next thing I wanted to talk about, which I think is really important, because again, there's a lot of narrative around this discussion, and it was even brought up this evening and during citizen comment time, and that is the notion of school board authority. Could you speak a little bit about that? Because I don't think your average teacher or parent really understands what school board authority means and where it comes from. And I think that's really important, because we talk about it as a board when we go to the General Assembly and we talk about local, local control, and there's also things in the statute. But I think that's a very key factor when we go down this road of collective bargaining, that everyone understands what that means and where to go to find more information about that.
And when you say school board authority, you're, let me just clarify to make sure I understand what you're, what you're meaning.
So I'm speaking more of school board rights, things that are, are given or authority provided from the statute or, and...
So obviously, so, so localities or school boards have sort of several bases of authority. And the preeminent one is the Virginia Constitution. Article 8, Section 7 of Virginia Constitution quite clearly and simply vests the authority over schools in elected school boards, well, could be appointed, take that back, in school boards. So just by that statement, it is clear that school board, and this, and this goes into the arbitration agreement and into the arbitration discussion that's been had about, could you, is there a way to turn over that authority to a third party? And the answer, I think, is plainly no. And, and we're talking about in an impasse, right? So the, let's use the impasse example, right? The school board is negotiating with the exclusive bargaining agent. The exclusive bargaining agent, going back to our example, says, well, we'd really like to have a 7% increase this year. And we say, well, all we have is the ability to do 5%. There are a couple issues if we were to turn it over to a third party, right? If you could say, well, we're going to go to a neutral third party and let them decide whether it's 7% or 5%. Well, first, the Constitution of Virginia says that it's vested in school boards, not that you can take it and give it to somebody else, a third party. So that's one legal issue. Two, the statute quite plainly says that nothing that is bargained over can impact or impinge on the school division's ability to control its budget. Well, if you say, if you're having a third party tell you that you have to give 7%, you're not controlling your budget. So that's a legal problem. And then also, there's, and I could get really esoteric and bore everybody who's watching to tears if we talk about the Dillon Rule and sort of, you know, how school boards only have the right, I see Mr. Wilk's thumbs up, you know...
It's not a bore every, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is a really big, momentous change in our school division. And I think it's, I'm always going to be the one who's like, please bore me, because I think it's everyone's responsibility to be as knowledgeable as possible when we make such a major shift.
True.
It impacts so many employees. And as we continue to see, it, everyone has a vested interest. So I'm sorry to be the one to bore people, but I mean, I find it hard to, for us as a board to make a decision without doing our fair share of responsibility of educating the public, but also learning ourselves, if, if members don't know, which hopefully everyone does because we've been trained and presentationed out. But it's still a matter of how much can you explain this to the folks that we have a responsibility to? That's what we're elected to do, and it's really important, I think. So I'm, I'm sorry to be such a hard-nosed about it, but I still have conversations with employees and bus drivers and people who have no idea this is even going on. So I, it's such a huge responsibility on everyone's part that if you don't mind, I'd really appreciate it.
No, well, then let the boring commence. The Dillon Rule is a, is a probably centuries-old legal doctrine that essentially says that, that school boards and localities only have the powers that are delegated and expressly given to them by the General Assembly or that are necessarily implied they're from. So those are the parameters on, on what school boards are allowed to do. And if that power, and there's, there was, there have been cases, of course, in other contexts where, you know, there has been a tension between Article 8, Section 7 of the Constitution of Virginia, which says school boards, you know, take it on its face... the Constitution of Virginia, which says, "School boards," you know, taken on its face, it would say, "Well, school boards have carte blanche authority and total empower over the school system." But we know that's not true, because the General Assembly every year gives us a bunch of stuff we don't want to do. Or maybe we want to do it, but we don't have the money to do it, or whatever it is. But there's always bills that come out, right? So obviously, you can't just take it in context, the Article 8, Section 7, that, "Hey, you guys run the school," because the General Assembly can expressly authorize you to do things like collectively bargain, right? So they've, they've expressly allowed that, with caveats that, "Hey, by the way, nothing can impair your, your right, school board, to control your budget." And part of that is probably because it wouldn't take long for a school board to sue the General Assembly or the, and say, "Well, wait a second. The Constitution says we run schools, and you're saying that we don't have authority to over our, our budget." And so there, there would be a tension there if they had not included that provision, as an example. So that's, in essence, the Dillon Rule. So there are basically, and, and of course, as I already alluded to, there are statutes that apply to localities, many statutes, that apply to localities and counties and cities, that do not apply to school boards. And, and this is not a collective bargaining reference, but there, as, as an example. Counties can give money, because again, they are the revenue collectors and generators. They set the tax rate, they decide how much revenue they need for operations, and they set the tax rate accordingly. And then they are allowed, unlike school boards, to fund things like the arts, or give money to outside entities, museums, things of that nature. School boards can't do that. School boards are expressly required to expend their funds for educational purposes, with the only exception being school foundations, so education foundations. So that's just an, that's, that's not a collective bargaining example, that's just an example of how there are many differences between the powers that counties have and that school boards have. I hope that answered your question.
It does. I, I think it's a very good, sort of short and sweet summary, and I think writing an ordinance is applicable to that, too, because it's a difference. We don't do that as school boards, but counties do that. So that's another good example. Thank you. I'm going to stop now, because I think everyone's...
I have a law professor somewhere who's very proud of me right now.
I appreciate your time.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this has been a long process, and I'd like to think I, you know, by documentation, as the evidence shows, I've been at the vanguard of this for almost 14 months. As I said in the paper, and I reiterated with my colleagues, this is a start, what we're at. We never know what's going to happen in the future. Laws may change, the General Assembly may tackle this, maybe address some of the limitations that are currently in it that are the law at the state level. But I also, you know, when we're talking costs, I also do believe inaction does have a cost, too. I think we've heard tonight a lot of testimonials of, you know, what our educators are facing. I see it at home. My wife is a teacher. The work that she's taking home, the changes, the number of professional development days, things that are being added, days after the kids get out of school, but other things, potentially, that are concerning to me. But I also, like I said, I think there's a cost in weighing the pros and cons with everything. And, and this is not necessarily for you, sir, but it's probably maybe questions that came up in my mind that maybe we can look at as a division that I don't want answers necessarily right now. I don't think we can, but I, I think there is a cost resulting from every time we lose a veteran teacher of 10-plus years. I'd like to know estimated costs of what that is for the division when we lose a veteran teacher. I want to know also how much in the FY '22 budget we've designated towards all the recruiting that we've done to fill all these vacancies over the course of this year. And then I also think it would be good to figure out what in the ballot, budget has been allocated now for the increased number of subs and temps that we've had to fill some of these voids. So balancing out the costs, you know, with some of the, what my colleagues have said, I think, you know, it's important to also weigh that with the ongoing situation that we see with the national teaching shortage that we are not immune to here in Prince William County. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the presentation, and I think, again, collectively, as colleagues, we, we've come up with a good starting point.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're not asking me to answer that.
No.
But hopefully Dr. Eagle's watching.
Yeah.
Ms. Jesse.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank you and the, your legal staff and Dr. McDade for putting together this comprehensive package and involving us in the process. When we, initially, we had this question about who the neutral party is going to be, you know? And so I know there's going to be a neutral party for mediation. There's going to be a neutral party that will determine whether or not we have the number of votes needed. Who determines, how does that neutral party determine? Who, who selects? What's the process for selecting that person?
Well, I went back and looked at that again today, and, and so there's a Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service called the FMCS. And they, for free, the one, maybe one of the things that's free, is that they will give you a list. If you need a neutral third party, and these are people who are experienced, I mean, only people on the list are experienced in labor relations and the kinds of things you would need. And we can ask for a list of seven people to choose from. Then we get with the union, and we basically agree on one. But I, what I looked up today was there's actually a coin flip, a coin toss provision in here that says, "Look, if," and let's hope it doesn't get to this, "but if, if the union and the school board can't agree on who the person from the list is going to be, then you toss a coin, and whoever wins starts striking." Like, if we win, we would start, we'd get to strike the first one. And then the union would get to strike the second one until we whittled it down to one. And then that's the neutral we'd use. You know, come, leave it to lawyers to come up with a, a coin toss for something as unexciting as picking a neutral third party.
Thank you.
But...
And I also want to thank you for including classified personnel, bus drivers. I think, I know we received some calls, and I want to thank your staff and Dr. McDade for including them as part of the bargaining unit. I have a question that maybe doesn't, I was a little bit confused about, you don't have to pay, and you don't have to pay for the union dues, but you're part of the, the package. So if there's any negotiation, you could still use the union resources? I'm not sure. Am I clear? Do you get my...
I do. I think, Ms. Jesse, the, the, so the law changed in 28, I think it was 2018, and I know Mr. Paltel, who's been invaluable in helping us with this, is watching from Maryland. And he, he, you know, there, there was a Supreme Court decision that said, "Look, you cannot require the employees in the bargaining unit to pay dues." And so, but even if they don't pay dues, you, union must represent them fairly, even if they choose not to join the union or pay the union dues. And those, that negotiation that the union, when they sit down with the school board to negotiate the contract, the union has a duty under the resolution, and frankly, longstanding labor law, to fairly represent those employees regardless.
I have another comment. It's not a question, because, you know, you and I, I asked the questions earlier. You're going to provide it for that whole voting process to take place, because over, that could not be an overnight kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am. I think, so, so just for those who are following along, the 30% is the showing of interest, right? So if, if the, if the, if a, if a exclusive bargaining agent, like the PWA, gets 30% of the bargaining unit's signatures, they submit that, they notify HR, Dr. Eagle, that that's occurred, and then those go to a third party. That means that an election then has, is going to be held. And that's where the 50% comes in. And I know you know this, but I'm just making sure those who are trying to follow along know this. Then the 50% would be, at least half the bargaining unit has to at least participate in the election, right? So I think your question is, "Well, would we be devious enough to go say that the election's going to be from midnight until 2:00 AM, and it's only going to be voting down at Samski's out here?" And you have to, you know, no. I mean, you know, the, the procedures are set in, in conjunction with the union, discussing it with the third-party neutral, because the third-party neutral is overseeing the election. And I assume she doesn't want to be at Samski's from midnight to 1:00 AM either, or he. And so, so to your point, we, we would, that is a process that would be designed with the third-party neutral, whose role and responsibility it is to oversee the process.
Okay. Well, again, I want to thank you for this, and, you know, I've been a supporter of collective bargaining for quite some time. I think, I think Justin was born supporting collective bargaining. But since I've been on this board, I've always supported collective bargaining, but I know that there are always caveats. And sometimes you have to be careful what you say, what you support, because when things go haywire, then you think, "Well, maybe I should have thought something differently." But I, I just want to thank you guys for the comprehensive plan and putting this together for us.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse.
Jim, can I get the screen so we can see Ms. Ralston again?
Oh, she's up there.
So I can't, but I can't see it on our screens. I need, no, we need to see it on our screens. All right, so I think I had Ms. Wall, and then, oh, Lisa, and then Ms. Wall, then Ms. Williams.
So, you know, for a few years, I've been collecting bargaining agreements from across the country, and you're aware that I'd had a number of questions. So this thing is really tiny compared to what it's going to be, right? The...
You mean what the, what the collective bargaining agreement itself will be?
Will actually look like, right?
Well, I mean, you know...
It could.
I guess, yes, it will, it will, we have, as you, you're, you're my diligent researcher, and you have pointed out that there are some collective bargaining agreements that run 150 pages.
No, 204.
204 was the maximum, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so I think also, our employees also need to know that this is not your actual thing. You've got, you've got all the little things that'll be listed under many chapters and verses. It's, it takes quite a while, I believe. Many of the agreements that I have seen will put in kind of, it's almost like an employee manual. It's almost like what's already in, so right now, for, for the general public, if you don't know, we all have this, teachers have a basic contract, every division has something. It's not very long. It talks about how many days you work and all those things, and it's real basic. But this thing would explode it, right? And it would, like, list all these other little things.
Yeah.
Or do we not have to do that? That's one thing I've never under, never...
Well, it would, it would depend on the, the number of issues that the parties resolved and decided to enshrine in the contract. It would depend on, on many of those things. Now, some of those things, again, because, going back to what I said earlier about how Virginia had filled in the gaps in the code, because there weren't collective bargaining agreements that addressed things like grievances, right? There's a, there's a statutory grievance procedure that is already enshrined in law. There, so, so those types of things, you might cut and paste and say, "Well, in the collective bargaining agreement, this is the same process the law requires us to offer. This is the same one we're going to have." And you put that in, so that may eat up a few pages, right?
Right, right.
So, you know, in theory, sure, there, it could be as long or as short as, as long as it covers all the, the terms that the parties have agreed on.
Covers the things. All right. And I wanted to piggyback on a question that Ms. Jackson had asked earlier about, you know, as a board member, we've been used to listening to employees come to us for a number of things. One of the very first things Ms. Jackson and I did was we met with an employee who was bringing, it was the, it was the baby, yeah, it was maternity. And, and it, I mean, it took a while to get to when Dr. McDade made changes to it, but... So that's an example of, of an employee that came with a concern that can affect a whole group of employees. It wasn't just one thing in one building. It was, it was an idea for a whole group. And we're still quite used to getting maybe emails about concerns about HVAC, or concerns about, we obviously heard about the, the multiple trainings and things like that. So are employees going to be able to still, you kind of to cover this, but, but that's another, another thing that comes to us, too. It's, it's these very, they sound sort of specific, but they could apply to many, many people across the division. Are we still going to be able to convey those things to division staff, or are we just sort of...
Well, you certainly could convey those things, the, any, you know, look, employees are going to have the right to contact you as an elected official, as their representative, those kinds of things. And they can certainly just, based on what's in the resolution, can talk to you about any issue or concern they're having. It's, it's the resolution of that concern that has to be sort of, we have to be wary about.
Right.
Terms of, right, is there something in that big 100, please let it not be 150 pages, in that document, in the contract, that addresses what it is that employee is seeking? And if so, then the answer is going to have to be employee. You need to go talk to your union leadership and express that this is a concern that you and other employees may have, and the union leadership will then bring that up when it's time to collectively bargain that, and say, "Is there something we could do around the leave policy that I'm now concerned about?"
Gotcha.
So that certainly will be the case for some concerns. That is going to be the mechanism by which the employee gets it to the administration.
Gotcha. Okay. Just wanted to make that clear, because I know in, in some of my research, because I wear the two hats, I wear the teacher hat, I wear the school board hat, I've, I had been advised at one point that, you know, once, once we do this, that there is no more discussion, and then, but, but I can't imagine that you totally shut doors with that. It's still, people can bring you concerns, it's just which avenue is most appropriate for them to be addressed.
That's right.
Okay.
And we've, and we've certainly not shut that door in, in here.
Right, okay.
But, but, but again, it's, it's going to be very case-specific.
Right. Thank you.
Jen, Jen Wall.
All right. Thank you. I have a couple of questions along the lines of union dues and employees being contacted by the union. So I understand that unions want information on who our employees are in order to reach out to those employees and explain to them why it makes sense to join the union and pay dues. And so my first question, I have a couple of questions that are related to this, but my first question, is this a fairly common provision? We have in our draft here that the list that could be turned, would be turned over...
Yes. It is a fairly common provision for school boards to provide unions with the new, every quarter, we have it in ours every quarter, that as new member, that we would share the name, title, position, and, and business email, so the PWCS email, of any new employee that was hired in that quarter, right? So, so that the union has access to that and can communicate with those employees.
Okay, thank you. So then, under our resolution, is there a provision for an employee who didn't, doesn't want to be contacted by the union or represented by the union and would, and could ask for that information to be withheld? Let's say they, they don't want to be bothered by the union. They already know they don't want to be represented, they don't want to be contacted, you know, kind of like an unsubscribe?
There is not a provision in the, in the resolution that provides for that. Certainly, the union could, you know, allow them to opt out of contacted, once they were, you know, we hand over the list, they reach out to them, and they say, "Thank you, I don't want to be contacted again." Certainly, the union could offer that. That is not a provision that's in here. That's not to say it couldn't be put in here, or probably in the collective bargaining agreement itself, maybe the parties would agree that, that employee X could opt out of receiving email solicitations or communications. So it's not a current provision.
Not currently in here. We could add it, or we could put it in the, in the agreement, in the contract, that once an employee has stated that they do not wish to be contacted, the union should refrain from...
Yeah, right. And I, and I do, I think it's important to, just to reiterate again, that this is not home contact information. We're not handing out employees' personal home address and those kinds of things. They, the unions would get that for themselves, presumably, but this is just business contact information.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I wanted to go back to the question about costs. I, I, you know, there's some narrative that says that collective bargaining is going to solve the national shortage of teachers. And I think that that would be inaccurate, because most states do allow for collective bargaining, and yet we still have a national shortage of, of teachers. So I wish to point out that that's not necessarily going to be our solution. If, if people want collective bargaining because they think that we're going to solve our teacher problem, I don't see that happening, because that's not directly a causal cause. Or it's not a direct causation. But I do have, and I have another question, but I don't know if I should ask it now, or should I, we go around?
Go ahead.
Go, okay. So I had a question with regard to employees' rights to converse about union activities during their teaching and working day.
Right.
So what enforcement mechanisms or monitoring mechanisms will we have in place to provide that such communications are not materially interfering with employees' job duties? Because that's language that's in the, in the resolution, that it should, you know, they can talk about it, but if it's material interfering...
Sure.
So do we define what is a material interference? And then how do we know if we, if we conclude that we have a material interference? You know, perhaps like, you know, employees are getting harassed, or somebody's, you know, doing collective bargaining instead of their job, whatever it is. Do we have some kind of way to, to, to a mechanism in place to, to determine that? Do we have some kind of way to, to, to a mechanism in place to, to determine that?
There's not a defined process for that. Essentially, it would be like any other, you know, disciplinary issue or supervisory issue, I should say, maybe not disciplinary, supervisory issue where, and I'll use the example, that, let's say that it's after school and two teachers are stuffing packets for whatever activity, I don't know. And they're, you know, they're, they're across the table from one another, and they're stuffing these packets, and they're talking about union stuff, right, at the time. It's not interfering with their ability to do their job, it's not interfering with their work, and the principal wouldn't presumably, and, and again, it, it could be as long as nothing that they're talking about is interfering with, you know, it could be last night's game, I don't, you know, whatever. The same rule would apply, right? I mean, if, if it is keeping them from doing their job, the supervisor would be able to take corrective action. And that's regardless of whether it was union talk or, or any other talk. But if Joe comes to the principal and says, you know, Jerry next door won't leave me alone, he's always haranguing me about being a dues-paying member of the union, and the principal certainly would be within his rights or her rights to go ask Jerry to knock it off, that you're, you are interfering with that employee's ability to do their job, they've come to me and asked that you stop. And so in that case, you certainly could take disciplinary action, whatever that would be, a verbal counseling, a, a letter of concern, or an email, hey, knock it off, whatever it is.
Okay, so it would be employees using the regular process of maybe complaining to their supervisor, assistant principal, principal, whoever it is, you know, that something's interfering with their ability to do their job?
Sure, if, if it rose to the level of something, and I'm trying to, I'm hard pressed to think of a, an example, but if it rose to the level of something that was an unfair labor practice, I mean, I, you know, I suppose it could, in theory, then there are mechanisms for both the employee, because remember, both employees are being represented by the union. You know, not just Jerry, the dues payer, right? These, this, so is, so is, John is being represented by the union, too. So John certainly could report that to the union and ask them to make it stop. And conceivably, I guess if it was severe enough, it might rise to the level of an unfair labor practice for which John could file a charge and recover attorney's fees if it was found to be an unfair labor practice. I think that's kind of an extreme example, but I suppose it could happen.
So an employee could complain to their principal, but they could also complain to the union?
Well, yes, and they could, and, and depending on if, you know, the facts, they could file a, an unfair labor practice charge.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one last question, kind of related, but could you shed some light on the duty to bargain in good faith? I know this is a standard that applies to both the union and management.
Correct.
But I think, you know, years of, you know, good, it's like the reasonable person standard, like what, what does, what is a reasonable person standard, right? What is, what does it mean to bargain in good faith? Could you shed some light on what kinds of behaviors or actions would constitute a lack of duty of good faith?
Well, I can give you...
Is there case law on this?
There is, and I, and in fact, and Mr. Paul Tell, who's watching, will, you know, send me a nasty gram later, because I don't remember the, the term he had. There's actually a term in labor circles for this exact thing, where the school board, you know, Dr. McDade walks into the room and says, I'm not giving you anything, our discussions are over, and that's it. Now, there is a term for that that I am not able to remember. But, but essentially, that would be a bad faith bargaining, right? We have walked in and said, I'm not doing it, not interested in talking to you, I know all your concerns, and we're not going to address them. That would, that's an extreme example, obviously. But it is nonetheless prohibited, on either side. You know, the union can't do the same thing either.
Okay, so refusing to even engage in the negotiation is...
Right, you've got to put your, your, your best foot forward and listen and, and participate, right? So you, you just can't, you know, because by and large, in negotiations, I think it's everybody's experience, there are going to be a few things you can probably agree on. In the whole, I mean, you know, there are, there are typically going to be these issues, and some of which might be minor, some of which might be major. And, and, and having agreed to several items and then saying, well, that's the bridge too far for me, I can't get there on that one, but I can do X, Y, and Z, that, that shows good faith bargaining, right? So that is, that is, it's sort of, I hate to use the old cliche, I know it when I see it, right? I mean, I, you know, I, I know obstinacy and not bargaining in good faith when it happens.
Right, so I hear, what I hear you say is that bargaining in good faith with both parties having this responsibility, both parties are going to have to come to the table and make concessions.
Absolutely.
Not just management, but also the union?
Absolutely, I mean, I think that's just part of the give and take. I mean, that's, that's, you know, and I think, I think it's, having negotiated things with other attorneys before, it's not as, you know, you always start out with your best ask, and then you whittle your way down from there, you know, and you've got certain things that you particularly really want, and, and you try to get there. That, that's what has to happen here.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your answers, and thank you for your work.
Sure.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it seems like we're taking a lot of time, and some people care for that, and some people don't. But again, I'm going to take as much time as we need, or as I need, because I think this is really important. It's just as critical as what our staff is being asked to do in their day-to-day. This is, this is all part of that. I just, first, I am a, a, a fan of collective bargaining. I'm still, my problem with collective bargaining lies at the state level, not at our level here. Because one of the things we don't talk about, or we haven't really discussed, is, you know, what, what happens, because the point of collective bargaining, or one of the things that, that makes collective bargaining so amazing, is it, it's an opportunity to level the playing field. It's an opportunity for staff to have a position, express their position, and there be repercussions for it, which is why I like it so much. One of the things that is, I find very disappointing in the Virginia statute is a lot of that is taken away from our staff. They don't have the ability to strike, they don't have the ability for a stickout. Could we talk a little bit about what are, and I'm sure, it's not, you know, not a favorite topic of discussion maybe on the board's side, but, because we would sit on the opposite side in an actual collective bargaining discussion or negotiation, that would not be our, our role, right? But if I put the other side's perspective on the table for a minute, what advantages do employees have in this process? I mean, I know it's a give and take process, and there's a lot of, we hear narrative from people coming to speak to us about what they want. But what are the guarantees, so to speak, for our employees who engage in this process? What, what is the advantage that they're getting out of this process? I don't think anyone's asked that question, and I don't think we've addressed it. And I think there's a lot of he said, she said, this is what we think. But I, I haven't heard anyone on this side of the dais or explaining to us what that means, or what that looks like for an employee. And if you don't have an answer right now, that's fine, because I sprung this on you.
Well, that's okay.
But I think it's important.
Yeah, I, and I'll, I'll attempt to answer it, and then if I don't, if I answer it poorly, I'll come back to you and-
I appreciate that.
-try to do it again. But, but I think the advantage for employees is the ability to have a unified structure, the union, and leadership, let's say, who can see that there's a concern at a school way over here in Woodbridge, and there's the same concern by an employee way over here in Gainesville, right? So, whereas those two teachers may never meet, may never discuss that they have this common interest, this common concern, whether it's the excessive PD or whatever it is, that the union as a funnel now knows, oh, we, this is a concern for our members, not just one or two, but 200, right? And they can, they can unify that concern, expression of that concern to the school division in a unified way, and, and ask the school board to do something about it and to memorialize that resolution in a written agreement. And so to my mind, that's one of the big advantages. And you're asking me to be a, you know, a union lawyer, and I'm happy to do it. But, but, you know, there are advantages to having that system of funneling concerns so that we know it's not just Mary over here in this one school who's expressed this one concern, and it made its way up to a board member. It's the union coming forward and saying, hey, Mary and Jane and Joe and a bunch of other people have expressed this exact same concern. And so it's clearly on their mind, and something that we would like to address with you, and we get in there and start swigging the coffee and eating the pizza and, and Dickering, right? I mean, that's, you know, so I think that's an advantage, I'll, I'll say. I'm sure, and, and I'll have to, if I can digress for a second, Mr. Paul Tell was kind enough to send me the term as bower, bowerism, which I can hardly even say, but I'm going to the font of all knowledge, Wikipedia, which says that bowerism is the tactic of making a take-it-or-leave-it offer in negotiation. And it was named after some CEO somewhere who basically took that approach. I'm walking in and telling you I'm not doing anything.
Okay.
And could you elaborate a little bit for me? I'm just going to take the, the position of one who does not know, the difference between this and like our meet-and-confer process? Because what we hear and a lot of the public hears is that there's not a seat at the table, employees don't have a voice at all, and this is why this is coming up. But I think there's also, it, it's important to talk about that, because until this process enters the actual negotiation stage of it, I want to be clear to the public, and, and to those who may not know within our school division, that there are still avenues to express your voice, and that this is not the, the, the first time we've ever done anything like this, or this is the first time we've considered employee voice outside of this boardroom, or people emailing us. Because I want to make sure that the employees know that, that there are still options until we get to that point where we're negotiating at a negotiating table.
Right.
Because I don't want to leave that out.
Well, Dr. Eagle could speak to this far better than I, and she has at previous meetings. I think there was a presentation the board received in the spring that talked about the meet-and-confer process, that, where, where groups of employees can meet. And there, you know, to lesser degrees, it's not, I don't think it's actually meet-and-confer, but, you know, there are advisory councils, I think the superintendent has a principal's advisory council, there's teachers advisory, there, there are other avenues. But this, the meet-and-confer process contemplates a sort of formal, periodic meeting with employee groups to discuss concerns they have. The major difference, of course, is that collective bargaining, it results in an enforceable contract, that then the terms of which can be adjudicated if either party were to violate it. So that's the main difference. I mean, in other words, you, and, you know, obviously, just the process of negotiating, and there's, there are, I don't know that there are specifics to our meet-and-confer process to the degree there are specifics, I'm sure there's not, to the degree here. As an example, the resolution requires that each side, the union and the school board, bring, I think it's five negotiators, and that's it. You can have five each, and then you, that, that's it. And somebody has, and one of your team has to be experienced in labor matters, right? So it's much more formalized in the collective bargaining sense, because we certainly don't have any of those kinds of strict requirements for a meet-and-confer process.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I mean, the legally binding agreement is one of the things that I am the most excited about, because I do believe that that gives our staff who are participating in this process a guarantee of sorts. And I think that's, from the individuals that I've spoken to, that has been the major factor, and that was one of the major, that made the most impression on me, because again, the state unfortunately took away some of the other means for negotiations, such as strikes and walkouts, that you see in other areas of the country, and that we don't have here, and our employees don't have. And so I think it's important that people realize that there is some sort of guarantee, and that there is some sort of leverage still in this process. Because on a surface value, it doesn't appear to be so when you just look at the statute. And there are still people asking like, well, why would you do this? If you can't strike, or you can't do this, or you can't do that. And so I think it's, I think it's important to speak to some of the positives, and that's one of the things I like the most about it. The last thing that I will say on, in this discussion this evening is, I, I don't need this answer now, I just want to piggyback on, of what Mr. Wilk was asking for information at a, at a later date from Human Resources. And I'm, I'm interested to see what some of our exit surveys say. Since we're going to talk about why staff is leaving and on things of that nature, I would be curious to know what some of the top reasonings during, for leaving, if the school board could be a little bit more informed than that, and sort of like a, a collective process, not just sort of happenstance. And again, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jesse.
Ms. Williams said that members of the board have not said, discussed what's in it for, why would we want to do this, why do teachers want to do this? They're tired. And they're tired throughout the United States of America, it's not just Prince William County. And I've been a principal for 20 years, and I know there were times that teachers could not come to me, and they needed a voice, and they would come to me, and then they would go to various people. And I was very supportive of teachers, but at the same time, I was always very supportive of teachers, of students. And so I had a high-powered running school. And so people had concerns, and they would take them to various people. When I came on the board, I was very naive, I thought that I could help solve some of the personnel issues. And Dr. McDade, I've learned that they're not supposed to come to me for personnel matters. Teachers don't feel they have a purse, place to go to. And I don't know if collective bargaining is going to solve everything for them, but it's very simple. And why are people leaving? Because there are other opportunities for them in other arenas. And it's very simple to me. And Ms. Williams said, I don't, I don't know if we realize how serious it is. I realize how serious it is, because people come to me all the time. They, when, during the pandemic, I heard this little movement on my computer with, do, 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 I said, what's going on? I got 300 emails, and people were very upset before Dr. McDade, because they felt their voices were not being heard. I don't know if collective bargaining is it, but we need to deal with the reality that we're losing teachers, and we have to provide mechanisms for them to have their voices heard. This is a very comprehensive plan that you put together. I know that there's going to be some give and take, but at the same time, I think that there's, I don't know why there's a question to me of why people join a union. They join unions because they feel they're not being heard. And whether or not they're going to be heard is going to be up to Maggie and her group. When they're unhappy, they're going to call you. And they're going to say, why didn't you solve my problem? But I don't think that it's your job to answer that question, because the surveys are going to come in. And I will tell you, people do not put on surveys what they want to put on surveys, because they think that someone will find out, they, they don't complain. And maybe this is a mechanism. I just, I just want to speak on behalf of teachers and say, I understand why you are unhappy. And I understand why we are, it's very difficult, and this pandemic has made it even more difficult. We've asked you to do things that we shouldn't have asked you to do in many instances. I think we put them in too early, that's just me. And we, they were in harm's way in some, some instances, because we didn't know what was going on. That's just my opinion. So why are they, what's in it for them? A sense that they have somebody that they think will listen to them. And I hope we can create a mechanism where it works for the board and for teachers. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Jesse. I'm sure I'm not going to be a popular person for them to call, but there, I welcome all calls, so it's...
Mr. Wilk.
Kind of going off that and this idea that there may have been a narrative tonight that collective bargaining was going to be the silver bullet of curing ones-all for the teacher shortage, and I, I wish it was that easy. I wish something like this, in passing this, was going to address the teacher shortage here and in this country, if it was that easy. I, I think, you know, people have done way more studies at UVA, of course, and other educational institutions and other programs about what is causing the teacher shortage. And, and I think until this country has a paradigm shift and starts holding teachers at the stature that they commend as professionals, with many with masters or multiple masters, and respected for the position, the position that they are, I do believe there will continue being a shortage. I do believe, to the point, though, that if you look at the top 10 performing states or the states where the teachers have the highest pay, nine out of 10 of them, I think the last one I looked at, Utah, was the only one that was a non-collective bargaining state. You now look and see, teachers have their pick before where they didn't in certain states- states to be able to find jobs. And if you have a teacher now that can move back home to Pennsylvania, yes, they can be back home to their family, but they can make way more for the cost of living, and they can feel much more secure in their jobs. Same thing for New York State, Connecticut, Massachusetts, I could go on, the list can continue, but there's something to be said that those teachers have more of a voice and more of a stake at the table. They're making more money for the cost of living, they have strong benefits, we're doing a great job trying to compete with that, but to the point here is, I think there's got to be a correlation to where these people are going and why they're leaving, and leaving and looking at maybe more attractive areas of the country where they will have a stronger voice, but that's just my thoughts.
I just want to clarify something.
Ms. Williams.
Thanks, I just, I just wanted to clarify something, and Justin, my cousin, give you a run for money, her money with the Pennsylvania union thing, just talked to her last night, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear, I was asking for just exit survey data, not general survey data, because there's a big difference in what people put on, like Ms. Jesse said, a survey you may receive on a random weekday versus when you're leaving an organization. So that's all the information.
This is where I'm phoning a friend, I hope somebody over here is taking notes about what.
It's recorded.
So I'm just going to wrap up with a couple of questions really quick. What other districts have passed collective bargaining in our region?
Richmond, schools?
Schools.
Richmond and Arlington, I believe.
Okay, and then who else, Alexandria City, I think, did it as well, is that right?
I don't know that they've passed it.
They haven't passed it yet. Who else is working on it? I know Fairfax has been working on it, what, about a year and a half, two years?
Quite a long time.
Quite a long time, right?
Yes.
Any, any, any chance they're going to pass it soon?
I have no idea, I know that there were 17 different groups involved in the negotiations over there.
Right, okay, and then, when I, when I took the board, when I started on the board, we were the lowest per pupil spend rate of our region here, of all the school districts, is that right, John, Dr. McDate? We're the lowest per pupil spending, right?
We were one up from the bottom.
One up from the bottom. Where are we this year, after five years?
We're in the same place.
We're in the same place, one up from the bottom.
We've made ground up for people.
We've made ground up per pupil spending, correct. And, but everyone else keeps going up, right? So we'll pass collective bargaining, I anticipate that'll happen. I assume they'll all pass collective bargaining as well. I have the same problem that I had when I started on this board, that we continue to pay teachers, and our per pupil spending in Prince William County is the lowest in the region or near the lowest in the region. And so for the folks that are, so I truly appreciate Chair Wheeler and her commitment over the last three years to get more funding for schools, we've had record funding, and even tonight, if you saw, we voted on more monies coming from the county, about 20 million from last year's fiscal budget we moved over as a transfer from the county. She has made a strong commitment and has looked for ways to get more funding for schools so that we could do the kinds of things that all of our teachers want, whether they wanted it before collective bargaining and certainly what they're going to want after collective bargaining. The folks in the General Assembly, though, haven't contributed to schools like they should. Last year or this year, Mr. Wallingford, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the first year we're going to get funded at the level we were pre-recession in 2007.
This year is, the first year will be at 2007.
Inflation adjusted, inflation adjusted, this is the first year we're back from funding from the state, and we depend, 40% of our monies come from the state. So while we have the General Assembly down there, and there's a $3 billion budget, we have a governor talking about a half a billion going back to tax, tax cuts, fine, I hear nobody down in the General Assembly talking about more funding for K through 12 after last year's record. Now, they did give us a record amount last year, but it doesn't just stop, right? It's not a one-time thing. And so for us to be able to make headway and not be the lowest per pupil and commit to paying our teachers more in the region, we need more money, whether we have collective bargaining or not, is that correct? I mean, I need more money, is that right?
Oh, I think you need more money.
Yeah.
If that's the question.
So, so, so what I, what I, what I think it's really important is, over the last five years, we have done a terrific job in this school division of trying to make, play catch-up. 4.8% raise, 4.8% raise, 2.4% raise, 5.0, and 7.0, plus more raises at different job positions over those years. We've done things like heels, baby bonding, we've, we've kept healthcare premiums, this year it won't happen, but healthcare premiums stayed zero for three years, in a row, three, four years, we'd self-insure and we do a good job of that. We made real progress in these last few years on this, but again, this all requires money, doesn't matter whether we have collective bargaining or not, and we also don't have taxing authority, as you pointed out. And so I think it's, I think I'm glad you presented, you know, some of these facts tonight, that, you know, those folks going to Richmond on behalf of us should understand that if they want us to pay more to our teachers, which we want, which, which is what I fought for, for four or five years, then I expect more from Richmond, meaning I want our money that goes down to Richmond coming back to Prince William County, and the way it comes back is the way we pay our folks. So passing laws down there, asking us to spend money without giving us our money back to do so is unfair and unacceptable. But I, and I bring this up because, you know, as I said, I expect this, this to pass in some form or way, but in the end, when everyone else passes collective bargaining, in five years, they're all doing it, and we're still one from the fricking bottom? That's a problem. Bargaining didn't solve anything. What we need is more money funding our schools from both the County Board of Supervisors and from the General Assembly, and there's no other magic way to do that. There's no other magic way to do it, other than we get a commitment from the County Board of Supervisors to fund our schools, find more ways to raise revenue, to get them into our schools, and, or, you know, we'll start cutting things to get things done. So, you know, I think it's just important that, I appreciate your presentation tonight, because it outlines many of the challenges, the slide on constraints that we face with collective bargaining is really important, and, but, but I find it remarkable that, you know, I've heard General Assembly members say, oh, we funded schools a lot last year as a record, we're done. And I've heard that on both sides of the aisle, they're not done. And I want everyone to be crystal clear, as we move forward with voting for programs like this and efforts to, as collective bargaining will become another tool in our arsenal to find ways to, to really take care of our employees, and let me remind everyone, Forbes' magazine recognizes us as the top school district to work for in the Commonwealth. You know, this is on top of all of our raises, on top of all the work we're doing, on top of the good work Dr. McDate has done as she came in, expanded and worked harder on meet and confer and all those things. This is, this is not easy work, so there's no magic bullet, no, as Mr. Wilk and Ms. Wall point out, we're not solving teacher shortage with this, because if we're still one from the bottom, I'm still fighting with everyone else for teachers around here. And so I think it's really important for everyone to consider that, you know, as we move forward, in whatever way we do. And, and again, I'm just, you know, I think it's very important to point out. So I appreciate this evening's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to move next to, we are on to, just an update on the Governor's School. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to keep it very brief, I did speak to this a little bit at the last meeting, the Governor's School Board did meet on September 1st, 2022, virtually. We went over the school calendar, which is public information, the meeting dates upcoming and throughout the rest of the year, highlighting when the Joint Board would meet, Alumni Day, Research Symposium, Graduating Day, and this year, the Governor's School will be hosting its graduation ceremonies at Manassas City Public Schools, who is the leader this year, we rotate, who is chair and vice chair for each school division that comprises the Governor's School in the Vision Park, and this year it is Manassas City Public Schools. So I look forward to further updates after our next meeting in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll do board matters, we'll start with Ms. Jesse. Oh, who, is that okay? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Wilk.
Okay, no, no clock. It's like your dream, Ms. Jesse.
It will be three minutes. I know. We haven't changed it. Get a clock up for these folks, thank you.
I would like to start. Thank you, everyone, this has been a lovely meeting, and I will be brief this time, I've talked a lot tonight during the collective bargaining discussion, want to talk about some of my ventures the last two weeks, and visiting a lot of my schools. So on September 22nd, I attended the Forest Park football game at home at Forest Park, where Forest Park was victorious over their opponent. On September 23rd, I attended Montclair Elementary School's Booster-Thon, Booster-Thon Fund Run. I want to congratulate all the students, students who did break their record for the funding goals and the fundraiser there. On September 24th, I attended Henderson Elementary Night Under the Stars, walking Paws, the mascot, around the facility. Good turnout from the Montclair community, as always, and I want to thank Henderson for putting on that program back when the weather was warm enough where we could do that, don't know if that would work now. On September 27th, I attended the Forest Park Girls Field Hockey Game, where the Forest Park Girls were victorious over Garfield. On September 29th, I attended Covington Harpers Back to School Night for their fourth and fifth grade students. With Potomac Shores, I attended then three events within the Potomac Shores community at the middle school as well, so it was great to see the Potomac Shores families at these events. On September 30th, I had the pleasure, as a big proponent of the watchdog programs within our schools, Ashen Elementary converted their watchdogs into what they call Falcon Force, Falcon Force, which is really cool, and I appreciate kind of the creativity there, and I had a chance of doing a shift, since it is also my oldest son's school, so I was there for that. On September 30th, that evening, I was invited to be part of the crowning ceremony for the homecoming football game at Potomac High School, want to thank Principal Brandon Bowles for arranging that. And then finally, last night, I was at Triangle Elementary's Back to School Night, and many more events coming as we continue the festivities and kickoff still Back to School Nights at our elementary schools. Thank you all, I'll end with some time.
Ms. Zargour.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I got to go to several of my schools' Back to School Night, and I got to revisit Parkside Middle School, they had sent a small group of staff members to Cambridge to take more training on the Cambridge program. I talked a little bit about that before, and they came back and just had so many great things to say, they represented not just Prince William County, but the United States as well, and I look forward to seeing what things they will be developing. They talked a little bit about how Cambridge is interested in partnering them on some research, and possibly, they do professional development for other divisions as well. So I'd be interested in hearing more about what's going to be happening at Parkside with the Cambridge program. I got to visit McAuliffe and Rosa Parks on the same night for Back to School, fortunately, they were close together. And I got to, again, if you have a book fair in your elementary school, let me know when your evening is, so I will come by and get more books for my grandson, I love adding to his library. So thank you, McAuliffe, for having a book fair and allowing me to add to my grandson's library. I got to watch the, many of our marching bands compete at the Colgan Invitational, and what's really nice is watching the arc of improvement, you know, so we're in education, we want to see continuous improvement in our academics and all kinds of things. But it was interesting to just be able to watch what had happened within just a few weeks with marching band, because many of these bands, we'd see at their very first football games that I went to, and they were only able to do part of their show, and now they're doing their whole show, and it's just the amount of work that the kids have put in, and all the parents who have been supporting these bands with, with, you know, getting equipment to these kids, uniforms, all those things, feeding them, that's really important. So it was just really neat to watch that growth through the lens of just, just marching band, and I got to spend that day with Ms. Wall and Dr. Latif had stopped by, so it was nice to see other board members at an event like that. Last thing I'm going to leave you all with is, I have some concerns about social media. Make sure that if you are a parent and you see something on social media, check in with your school first, check with your teacher before making assumptions about things, we want to make sure that we keep things within our schools, and always go through your teacher and your principal first before worrying about too many other things. The other thing I want to talk about briefly with social media is make sure that our, our kids are not sharing, it's cyberbullying, guys, if you share stuff and you're being snarky about it and it gets sent around, you're making someone else's life miserable, so let's, let's knock that off, all right? With that, I will leave you with the last 14 seconds, have a good night, good week.
All right, thank you. So I just want to begin by saying I think we're off to a great start, here we are in the first week of October, and been in school now for five or six weeks. I want to express appreciation to our fantastic teachers, administrators, nurses, specialists, counselors, everyone, who has played a very important role in setting the tone for this school year. And I, I've been out in the schools, I've been hearing parents talk about how happy they are and how pleased they are with what's happening at their schools, how great it is to be back, and I want to say thank you to all of the individuals in our school division who are making that happen by their dedication and selfless service. As I travel around my district, attending Back to School Nights, I also see that the children, for the most part, are happy to be back in class, there are those occasional children who will tell you that they don't want to be in school, but I know learning is taking place, and that makes me very happy, because that is our core mission, is to help children learn and grow and fulfill their full measure of talent and ability. I know we're not perfect, but we're doing a good job and we've had a good start, so thank you. Back to School Nights have also given me a chance to introduce myself to parents and wish them well and hear some of their concerns. In the past two weeks, elementary school Back to School Nights have started up, so I've been able to attend events at Alvy, Gravely, and Mountain View, and I am looking forward to attending events Sudley, Sinclair, Mullen, and Tyler in the coming weeks, those are my seven elementary schools. Over the last few weeks for professional development, I attended a VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference and learned more about the new Virginia Literacy Act, which I am excited to learn more about, because I feel like reading is a fundamental skill, and I am very excited to see that we are going to be focusing as a state and also as a division on what we can do to help children read better, because I feel like it is absolutely essential. I also attended a training on Title IX, which I felt was very useful to me, I appreciated it a lot. I loved Colgan Classic on September 24th, it was awesome, such a fun thing, I'm a band parent, or was a band parent, always a band parent, so it's, it's just, I just know how much work goes into it, and just appreciate all of those people who worked in that. Battlefield was the AAA Division winner, the first place overall winner, and took home first place wins in the categories of color guard, visual, and general effects. So my last comment in the last 17 minutes is that the band support organization at Battlefield is hosting a charity car show on Saturday, November 5th, in the Battlefield High School parking lot, so if you want to be a part of that, take a look at the Battlefield Band's Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, like many of my other fellow board members, attended a bunch of Back to School Nights. I promised to my schools that I will do better about posting the pictures on social media, I always take them, very rarely do they make it up, but I was there, and from what I understand, they're now tweeting them out for me, so thank you. But I was able to attend Featherstone's, Woodbridge Middle School, River Oaks Elementary, Belmont, Ripon, been to a couple different ones, because again, most of our schools, due to our growth in our county, have smaller parking lots, then they have parents and guardians who want to come and participate in these events, so they're often broken up into multiple nights. I did also attend Featherstone Elementary's Title I Math and Reading Night, which was amazing to me, not so much to my nine-year-old, who was a little dismayed that he had to pick a book, but he comes from a long line of readers, so, like Ms. Wall was saying, I also attended the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, and this past Friday, I believe it was, myself and Ms. Dagapour were in attendance at Hilton Planetarium for the first imaging, first viewing of the images from the James Webb Telescope, and the nerd in me was just really excited to see the difference between, and learn the difference between the Hubble and the new telescope, and if you haven't had a chance- And if you haven't had a chance to visit our very own planetarium in this county, I would highly encourage you to do so. There's some fantastic shows at Hilton. I also want to bring up for all of those virtual learning families, because we still have so many in our county, I want to congratulate and give kudos to Proximity Learning for sending out their inaugural newsletter. They highlighted all of the things that October is about and gave great useful tips for parents to talk to their, parents and guardians to talk to their students about bullying and cyberbullying and, and the like. I'm also excited about their launch for Proximity and Beyond Events. There was the first one held this evening, which was a read-along for Choose Your Own Adventure. Anyone who's been out of school probably about, we'll just go with 20 years or so, Choose Your Own Adventures are probably the highlight of our reading library life because you had to say in what was going to go on in the book. So I was kind of excited. My elementary schooler was, again, not as excited, but he'll get over it. I did want to bring up and remind our listening public that we do have an obudsman. If you are not familiar with what the role of the obudsman is, there's more detailed information on our website, but for those teachers that we hear or staff members that are dealing with conflicts or issues in your school day or environment, I highly recommend you visiting our obudsman. That is one of the reasons why they are there and they provide service to our school community. In addition to that, I just want to say congratulations to Dr. McDade and our administration on our new rollout for our new brand, which I hope will bring new rhetoric, new culture, and remind everyone that in order to move forward, we also have to change the language that we use. So thank you and look forward to seeing you at the next school board meeting.
I also love the new brand. It's beautiful and it, it speaks to who we are and what our goals are. I just wanted to say that I have two new schools and those two schools are Marshall and Carydale. Now, each school is very different on my visits. When I, Marshall, I don't know where they find these parents, but they're all over the parking lot. You cannot get into that school. They're, the parent participation is off the hook. And I was also able to visit one of the class, several of the classrooms the next morning. I went by and the classrooms were very different and they're, 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 when I look at classrooms, I look at a lot of things, but the personalities of the teachers were there. I just want to tell them that I'm really excited about working with them. Carydale, Carydale is the best-kept secret in Prince William County. They are involved in this visible learning project. John had his research on meta-analysis, what works. And I just, so today I thought I'd just share with you some of their scores, reading. They went from 56% pass rate to 74 above the county, math from 41 to 74 above the county and the state, science from 36 to 69. Maybe they didn't hear there was a problem with science above everyone and in history, 85% pass rate. So I'm very excited about that project and I'll be visiting them again. I also went to Aquaquan. When I came on the board, I, I didn't know I was not supposed to get involved in personnel nor that I know that I should visit all my principal friends on the western, on the eastern end and realize that we had a property problem here. Not a property problem, we had a problem of finding space and so I realized that we had all these trailer situations. And I started doing some research on how we could, one, get the land and how we could look at a different way of using space. And I went to Aquaquan last night and I want you to know, they are so excited about being the first net zero school. But I want to give special thanks to Buddy Lynn for his work, but to Hamish Buer, who he knew I was looking at schools and he said, you know, for space, he said, Ms. Jessie, look at this land in the back of this school. And he was the first person to point out there was land at Aquaquan. So I'm very, very excited about the possibility of building a new school there on the land. And believe it or not, the first principal was Elizabeth Vaughn, who never, was never a principal at Vaughn, and the second principal was Herb Saunders. So I'm excited about all the possibilities, Rockledge and Lake Ridge, I really enjoyed being there also. And Lake Ridge, I need to come back for your Back to School Night. So I just want to thank everyone and the teachers, hang in there.
Ms. Ralston.
I just want to thank the teachers and coming back and going forward. So have a good day and a good season.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jackson.
Hi, thank you. Since the last meeting, I was able to attend Back to School Night at Gainesville Middle, Marcelo Middle, Two at Victory Lake, T Clay Word, Ellis and Cedar Point. Thank you to staff and families for taking a moment to talk to me. Back to School Nights are a great example of the important partnership between families and schools. This relationship is fostered through relationships and direct communication. I know as an educator, I appreciate when a guardian reaches out to me directly to problem solve or praise. That direct line off social media is important to foster and utilize. Also, I have relayed your concerns about transportation to the division. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. Dyslexia is a neurological condition that is characterized by difficulties with accurate word recognition, decoding, and it can impact reading comprehension, speech, trouble identifying left to right. So I just wanted to take a moment to just say that dyslexia can impact as many one to five students. And there's a Parent Resource Center here at the Kelly Center, whose mission is to assist parents and families of children with disabilities to become active participants in their child's education. PWCS also has some resources on their website for dyslexia. October is also National Physical Therapy Month. Physical therapies in our schools assist in achieving educational goals relating to position in mobility that are developed by the IEP team. They play a vital role in helping students achieve knowledge, skills necessary to create the thriving future for themselves that we talk about every day at every meeting, and I thank them. Next week is School Lunch Week and I just want to take a moment and thank all staff who make sure our students are fed and safe. And lastly, thank you to all staff. I know this year has been a whirlwind filled with full speed ahead to a sense of normalcy. And on top, there are a lot of trainings. From my experience this year, some of these trainings are state mandated because I also attended the V SBA Legislative Advocacy Session. I just want to just take a moment and ask any state representatives that were here or may be listening, that they consider the workload when advocating, workload on staff when advocating for schools. And just thank you to the students who were here for coming and all students who have ever come and spoke to us. Love and respect to all y'all.
All right, well, so I got a little impassioned earlier. I'm not going to stand up on my chair this time. But what I, what I want to say is, as you heard some of the things that I said, you know, we're at the bottom for per pupil spending, what I want to tell everyone is, this is the best school division in America. I firmly believe that. I, I wouldn't put my own children in the school division, keep them in the school division if I didn't believe that. And I think it's one of the best damn school divisions in the country. And I will tell you that the rest of the country is seeing it as well. And is, an example is the NICE rankings, who rank school divisions in every state. It's N-I-C-H-E, it's called NICE. If you, their newest rankings came out last Wednesday and they had, you know, when we took office in this board in 2019, Prince William County Schools ranked 26th in the Commonwealth. In 2021, we went to 20th and this year we went to 17th as best school division in the Commonwealth. Now, I don't live and die by the rankings. You know, there's a lot of reasons for what goes into those, but certainly student success goes into that, the way we treat our employees goes into it, and it's a trajectory. We've moved nine spots in three years. That is remarkable. You add on the fact Forbes Magazine, by external surveys, ranked us as the 11th best large organization to work for in the Commonwealth, number one for school divisions in the Commonwealth. You add to the fact the United States Department of Agriculture recognized us as a green ribbon school division for our sustainability, sustainability, sustainability and energy initiative. You add to the fact that we continue to have a AAA bond rating, which recognizing, recognizes our financial responsibility and, and our, our good work with our finances. Those are all really important things. And, and so while I will complain about our per pupil spending, because I know we have just a tremendous potential we can realize, and bringing Dr. McDade in over a year, year ago, she has outlined our trajectory for that potential. You've seen it in our logo, you've seen our strategic plan, you know, we have an exciting future ahead of us. And, and, and I would not send, you know, if anyone were asking me if I'm going to move to the DMV area, where would I live? I would say you should live right here in Prince William County School because our schools are the best. And I firmly believe that and they only get better and they're great because we have fantastic teachers that we do work hard to try to recruit and retain and keep them here. That's the work we've done. I've outlined, you know, the numbers and the raises we've given and so it's critical. Most importantly, after all of that fact, because we want our students to have tremendous post-secondary success, our seniors need to be working on their senior application, their applications for colleges. But parents, the FAFSA forms opened up a couple of days ago and Dr. McDade is the biggest fan of FAFSA forms. Will tell you that it is very important to fill those things out accurately because whether you're applying for financial aid or not, or you believe you can or can't or don't, you know, you don't qualify, even if you get scholarships, the scholarship organizations need to see your FAFSA. So please fill out your FAFSA. If you do not know how to do it, go to the counselors, they will give you advice. There are a lot of resources online. Thank you very much. At this point, the school board meeting is adjourned.